Like you give us some whole people ceremony.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, I, um, two, two days ago, we had a meeting here talking about the recreation, how we go about forming the process. And I met a council member, Ron Pyron, and he's been on his city council for twenty years, twenty in the year. And he's been running again, but he has some competition this year. And I in the past have also met the Weldville mayor, and he said he has been the mayor for how many years? Two thousand and sixteen years. Uh, anyway, I'm just very impressed. We have people on this bench, Norm, you've been on for it's your eighth year. I mean, that's just a lot of commitment. Anyway, I just wanted to say I'm grateful to people who keep running and keep serving and and Larry, you've been on multiple organizations over the years and so just grateful for experiencing what we have with the staff and elected officials to help guide those of us from council to uh make good decisions. So anyway, I'm also excited about the upcoming elections this fall. We have some people who've been there, they were running for both council and our mayor, mayor again, which I'm very excited about. So yeah, that's all. And if that was suffice to say, the pledge of allegiance before we begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic it stands, one nation under indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So good thought. At some point, the citizens of Nibley will realize they're not voting for Larry Jacobson, who's ninety years. I actually, I'm fired. This was, oh man, can I say this? I'm gonna say it. So there's a guy named Sandor Sheshi, who is a relative of Poitiers. I'm fired with him for like six, no, twenty hours and two days last while. And he scheduled the umpires and when he wrote my name down, it was Peter Jacobson Jr. And so the people didn't think it was Larry Jacobson Senior, who I am not related to. Uh, that was, I was, I was honored to be associated with, with that Larry Jacobson because he did a lot for baseball and recreation.
Is he still around?
Yes, still alive.
Really?
Yes, he is.
That's fantastic.
And, and I gave him the citizen of the year award two years ago. So Larry Jacobson gave Larry Jacobson citizen of the year for, there were some maybe run said eh. But he, he's a great guy.
He umpired me.
Yeah. Anyway, with that, I'll call the meeting to order. Uh, this is the June twelfth, uh, Nibley City Council meeting. And Erin, will you start us off on a roll call?
You're in next.
You're in, Larson.
Larry Jacobson's staff, if you're in front of a mic.
We've got Robert C. Klein.
Johnson.
Tom Dixon, City Attorney.
Eric Moll, Public Paper.
Amy Johnson, City Treasurer. And other distinguished guests, welcome. With that, let's uh turn the council's attention, please, to the May twenty second meeting minutes and our current agenda. I could elaborate on the agenda a little bit of how it's got there if you want me to. Um, if you don't, I'll probably do it anyway. It's, oh, I've accepted motion from the council.
Motion to approve all.
Okay, motion from Norman, a second from Erin to approve minutes and agenda. Uh, while we're talking about it, you're gonna see that we're splitting a public hearing on twelve hundred West Traffic Calm with when the council actually gets to discussion and consideration. And you know, that's not our habit. Um, the, the request to get twelfth West on the agenda came late enough that we had kind of established a pretty good focus on getting through a budget workshop by, so, um, the council members that asked for that to be on the agenda fully supported being there. Uh, they said it'd be okay if we did a public hearing and then came to the council discussion later. So that's, that's why that split. Uh, is there any discussion on the motion for minutes and agenda? Seeing none, those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And any opposed? All right, we have minutes, so we have an agenda. Next is a public comment period. This is a chance for Nibley residents, non-residents, anyone who would like to stand up and speak to Nibley City. I'm not quite done introducing this in. Uh, we welcome, we welcome you to do so. If you're here to speak on or listen to another agenda item, because I know you two, and so I'm kind of giving you a chance to, as, as, as proponents or advocates for uh, an item on our agenda, I think it's agenda item twelve, yes. We welcome you to speak during that discussion as part of the council discussion. That's not a privilege given to just anybody. It's given to people who are who are proponents and applicants in the process. However, if it's not convenient for you to be here at that time and you want to make sure that you, you, you have the council's attention, we will welcome anyone and everyone to speak to Nibley City as long as it's on a, a Nibley City matter at, at this time. Am I clear? Okay, would you like to speak to us? Okay, tell us your name, tell us where you live, please.
My name is Tina Howard. My address in Nibley is twenty four ninety South, thirteen fifty West. Um, what I want to talk to you guys about has partly to do with two hundred twelve that is going to come up, but mostly not. Each of you who are elected, I believe understand, having come before you before, I want you to know that you can't take just recommendations by other people. You need to go and look, you need to be on the ground, you need to ask questions. It's not just city council time. And sometimes there are assumptions that are made by the council or supporting members of the city. And those bits of misinformation cause continue. So if you're not fully aware of the whole subject, you really should watch how you vote because you might be voting against something you really would want it. But you can also vote for something that is on someone else's agenda, a personal agenda. Um, during our last kind of before the, the council, we had a person state that they didn't know how they felt about having a food business inside a facility that makes soap. There are two assumptions in that. One is that even after discussion, and my daughter told the council, I'm not making food here. There is a business address. I'm doing stuff up at Utah State where they have an incubator engine. The incubator part is business, just like an incubator is done at home or on a farm. We've put something in it to keep it warm, to keep it moist. We want it to have the best environment we possibly could. So an incubator kitchen that is happening with USU has business people helping. It has food scientist people helping. It has QA and QC. So quality analysis, quality control. And my daughter would actually make the stuff she wanted to sell up at USU. Her mailing address obviously can't be USU. So I said, put it down as us and they'll give you a front office space that you can store your goods before you go to the gardeners market. The second assumption of this, aside from she wouldn't be making food in our facility, is that majestic has been in, um, in Nibley since two thousand and ten. We don't make soap. Imagine coming to a meeting and people assume we make soap. We don't. We'll teach you how to mix up. We will sell you the ingredients to make soap. But you cannot go by what you think a business is doing. You have to know. The other part of this is good citizens make or break a community. If we cease to be good, our community ceases to be great. And that includes voting on council. It's very important that you have good information. One of the letters sent into the planning and zoning group is that if we changed our commercial area to industrial, it would attract more rats. Rats live where people live, not where businesses resided. New York City has a huge rat problem. They are not a huge location for industrial. Assuming that rats would be a problem is a misinformation and it was spread. Nobody was able to do the research before the meeting to say rats are a non-issue in this type of situation. If you look at what rats eat, they do not eat metal. Our, one of our neighbors for our business, um, is a machine shop. They are, they modify vlogs, they are modifying some other element. I, I don't know how they have been there for so long. And yet they are against what current needs. There have been changes to his property and no one has updated our criteria to show it should be industrial. You have a man who's got two buildings and he's keeping staff busy. He's doing something positive for our community? And zero problem with him and his business as a business.
Steven, can I, can I just jump in for a second? Um, as you see the guidelines in front of you on the podium, we, we have a full agenda tonight and it's typically limited to three minutes. I'm not going to limit you obviously to three minutes because we're past that. Are, are you, are you getting close to wrapping this up?
Getting close.
Thank you.
So he is miszoned. So we are asking, can you look at this again? Another person said, I don't want this to change to industrial because standards of another neighbor of ours makes too much noise. There is noise everywhere. It comes with humans. We are the noise makers. The, the issues at hand, we could be looking at the dogs. We could be looking at the children at the school. We could be looking at deliveries and outgoing freight. We can listen to Highway ninety one just right where we are. But they didn't address that the noise issue. It's unless you're on the ground, you don't know what's going on. The noise that happens near us is actually fairly minimal. And I'm not thinking that this is just because it's a public road. Remember, thirteen fifty West in this section of the city is a private work, which means all of us need to share it. So I'm just asking you, as you go through and make your decisions, make sure you're not dependent on someone else. Go look. Go listen. Go see everything and then ask questions of the neighbors. They are going to be the ultimate place for issues that will be presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect. And begins the invitation to be part of our discussion is extended. Anyone else like to address the council? It's Amy or, okay. You did a great job, by the way, last time. Appreciate you commenting to us about property rights. Guiding us on some of the issues of uh how we draw this fine line between the rights of the community and the rights of individuals. So thank you for that. Now with that, if there's no other further, if there's no further comment, I will close the public comment period. And we'll move to the planning mission report. Be right, that's you, please.
Sure, um, other than item twelve on the agenda, which I'll, I'll address at that time. Uh, the planning commission approved a concept plan for a meeting house for the Church Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints at uh about thirty four twenty South, twelve hundred West. Uh, so that um, it's, it's a ten acre parcel and they're, and they're proposing to develop five acres of it with the church there. And, uh, they, they still need to get a conditional use permit and final site plan approval. The conditional use permit will be They, they still need to get a conditional use permit and final site plan approval. The conditional use permit will be. Um, considered by the planning commission and then the site plan will actually uh. With the recommendation from planning commission uh, be considered by the city council in an upcoming meeting. Cause, because the building's over ten thousand square feet, which is kind of what our standard is for. Um, commercial and institutional uses. Yeah, so it's just, it borders Nibley Meadows there. There's a ten acre parcel there and they're, they're proposing to develop. About half of it with the church. That's it.
Uh, other things that have that. Uh, with that, then we have two, two public hearings scheduled tonight. Uh, this is a. Chance to hopefully talk specifically about two separate items. The first one is twelve hundred west traffic calming. And I made the decision on my own to. Put the public hearing on in part because the council told us through resolution on. In October that we would like opportunities for the public to interact with the council. Uh, in, in official meetings and so. I know there are a couple of specific questions. Not sure if, I, I, I'm going to ask staff to address those two specific questions before we get to the public hearing. Hopefully you don't have the deer in the headlights look. But in a way of introduction, first of all. And Tom, if you'd rather wait until we get to the, the, the council agenda item, the council discussion, that's fine, but I'm recalling. Can you recap for us the changes that there might be to the malleable curves on phase five? Is that a good time to do this or? Go ahead, Justin.
Yeah, my two cents is if no one's here to speak on it, just to have them do it. We'll do whatever you want.
Yeah, that's, that's fair point.
Either way, we're happy to do either way.
I'll take that as courage. So we'll just with that, we'll open the public hearing. This is a discussion on twelfth west traffic. I'm. I'm frankly a little bit surprised that I can't make people come and talk to us, so.
And we talked.
Yeah, and there's stuff that goes on outside of public areas. It's, it's good, so. I'll give it a going once, going twice. Going three times. Uh, and yeah, we don't do online comment anymore because of the. Cause we get bombed by teenage kids. Have more fun than we do. Uh, so with that, I'll, I'll close the public hearing and we will come to the council discussion on this agenda later and um. Uh, with that, Tom, I will turn to you on this one. This is another public hearing on a CIB grant funding application. Uh, we're seeking input on consideration of receiving fifty thousand dollars uh, for Nibley City to uh. Help us work on our traffic master plan.
Anytime you can get free money, try it. So this is a. Just an attempt to help. Burn some of the cost on updating faster transportation master plan. We frequently update master plans. We're in the middle of updating the general plan right now. We recently, and we're just finishing up the stormwater master plan, which was also partially funded by CIB grant in years past. And we're also, we, we did the active transportation plan. And so. It's time for the transportation master plan. So the CIB program requires all applicants to have a vigorous public participation in all applicants. We have to hold a public notice hearing and solicit comment concerning size, scope and nature of any funding request. So on the back table and also hand it out to you, there's a complete uh, an estimated scope of work with, with tasks. And cost estimates on each of those. So it's available to the public. We're encouraging this, this. Third team public comment on it, both focused on scope of work and the funding mechanism. Because if this fifty thousand dollars we're getting from CIB, we have to match with another fifty. So the information shall include financial impact to the public. It's usually special assessments for priority taxes. None of these are going to be affected by the, the transportation master plan update. So there, there will be no change there. And then uh, just, just as a note, the CIB re- reserves the right to require further public hearings. If it's determined that you have to not adequately disclose, disclose. The public possible financial impact of the financial system. So I'm going to go through the scope of work that I, that I prepared. So basically nine tasks that I broke down. And task one is reviewing existing plans, zoning and other documents that would affect transportation. Next task would be gathering and analyzing traffic data. The first task, pardon me, this has been cost of D five hundred dollars. Second task of gathering that and analyzing traffic data is about ten thousand. Coordination with city and other stakeholders, so that about twelve thousand dollars. Form and maintain a technical advisory committee that will help guide. The documents and research would be about sixty-five hundred dollars. Public involvement. That there will be public meetings, open houses, we're seeking public input during this whole process. It's estimated to be about twenty-five. Specific task to address the multi-transportation fees. It's been a night of contention recently. Um, the other one is create a capital facilities plan that will help us with impact fees. And then also address maintenance budget, repair traffic and then preparation of all documents. All this total is about a thousand dollars. CIB will be on the move for fifty thousand. Right now, I just encourage anybody that has any, well, I'll turn the corner of the capsule, but. The CIB requires. Input and seeking input actively on this, so I'll leave it to council there if there's some questions.
Yeah, I have one question before we actually turn it to the public hearing. That is. Uh, this. I assume this scope of work was identified and fleshed out in the process of. Uh, in, in a process before the CIB possibility of a grant got involved. Is that true?
This scope of work is based on experience, other transportation master plans that have been developed. From other communities and I had Levi look through it just to make sure that we didn't miss anything.
And so. Really, it's, it's nice to have CIB Community Impact Board. Money available to help us do this, but we're still acting autonomously as Nibley City in developing our own plan. Perfect. And CIB hasn't exerted any, any strings attached or anything else that to receive this grant. Besides seeking and active public input that, that would, that would shape our plan. If they do, it'll be for a good reason.
Yes.
Right. So that's fine. Okay, I just. Um, we, we view CIB grant money before for planning and it seems like they're uh, increasing. Their interest in getting public input and I welcome that. So with that, I'll seek public input. On whether we should receive fifty thousand dollars from the Community Impact Board. To cover fifty percent of the costs for Nibley City to write. A uh. A new transportation plan with that scope of work that you've seen. I open the public hearing. Don't go sometimes. There's thousands of people watching us on YouTube. We're, we're going with that. Seeing no public comment, I will close the public hearing. And uh, note that the scope of work identifies other po- other potential. Other places where we will seek public hearing, of course, as we develop this uh. As we develop this new transportation. Okay, um. With that. That moves us to the main item for the night. Justin, you've been working very hard. This third city council meeting that we've taken this up and this is where we. Uh, really get into the details of show budget. Mending the budget for this year, if there are any, and setting the budget for next year. So. Justin, I invite you to take us through a workshop on that. Uh, will you take questions from council as we go along?
Okay, you can interrupt me anytime.
Thanks.
And thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity. Because I gotta be honest, I was a little disappointed the crowd turned out tonight. I was hoping. Really get this excited and roll into the budget, so.
Appreciate the people that are here though.
You remember Charles' phone, right? As you tell me, I also brought brains to the operation and Amy's here. I really want to say to Amy all the time, yeah, she put it in this pot, she put her heart soul in this, just as much as I did. So really want to thank her. She, she welcomed the chime in as well anytime she would like, or she would like to make. So thank you, Amy, for your, for your efforts on this.
I forgot it. You just said next slide, sorry.
And you know, because of. Large crowd here. Very kind of take cues from you guys. Do you want me to speed up, slow down? If you care, but you guys don't get as much detail as possible. I mean, we'll try to go through this earlier. It is a bunch of information. So. Um, as you're aware, standard practice for Nibley City budget practices for a long time has been to overestimate our revenue. Or excuse me, underestimate our revenue, overestimate our expenses, put it, push it into, into the budgeting process. So we always make sure we have that. Um, and the story for me this year has really been to try to tighten that a little bit. I believe that's a great practice. We need to continue to do that. We need to. Follow that, but really try to. Bring it back to. Some level of. More add. If uh, we, we were in the past, we've been receiving anywhere from over the last ten years, Nibley City received five to ten percent more. Expensive and our expenses have been ten to fifteen percent less. So if you think about it, thirty percent swing. In our budget, that seemed a little extra large for me. And so the story of this year's budget has really been to try to shrink that down to be more accurate, to be more precise. To show revenues where we think we're going to get them and show expenses where we expect them to be. With that bottom line, still keep a little bit of cushion, but try to reduce that cushion, so. As I mentioned, Tom already mentioned the grants. As city staff, we are always looking, always watching for grant opportunities, doing everything we can to find money if out there. Whether that's through the federal government, the state government, private, east, wherever we can. We're always watching for that, do what we can and what we'll say. Since twenty twenty-three. Now, we, we've been a loop of about eight point two million dollars for projects. A lot of that is twelve west. City center park, otherwise the original park. And. But I can't think of it. You were, um, so anyway, we, we do everything we can to go look for those. We, right now, we currently have, it's sort of a little out of data because we have. When this was, slide was kind of put together three months ago, we had out there, we were asking for about one million dollars, one point eight million dollars grant now. Yeah, we heard something that wraps is coming back. Didn't get a lot of it, or a lot of it, it's, we didn't get it. But just trying to drive it. So this is an overview of the entirety of city budget. If you notice, there are fifteen lines on this page of our table. And that represents fifteen accounts that Nibley City. Tracks and maintains. You can think of each one of these as its own bank account. There's specific money that goes into that fund. There's specific money that go out of that expenses. Each one has a reason and. Priorities and things that happen with this, inside that fund that kind of govern what happens in. So we're going to go over every single one of these. So we'll finish the, the big ones and the informal ones. Kind of bumps a little water and the impact each other together, but I'm happy to get as much detail as you would like me to get into, but. The uh, if you look at the bottom line, this is a little difficult to look at a chart, summarize this budget because it is so complicated. But if you look at the bottom line here, uh, you see a thirteen percent increase. That seems a little, that seems big. I mean, the first question is why? Why are we increasing our revenues and our expenses by thirteen percent? But if you look on the line, it really comes down to this year, it's changed year to year based law on specific projects and on specific grant revenue. In this case. The big news of the day is that just yesterday, my days of, well, Tuesday, Tom and I went down for the drinking. Taking three and a half million dollar loan and we're authorized for that loan at two and a half percent interest. To fund the drilling and equipping of our new water source. And so because of that loan, this number gets, looks like it's a little bit. But if you take that loan out, so the grant, we're actually, our, our budget actually shrunk a little bit. I think we're, it's really about down three percent from where we were last year. Just based on some of those big things. So, so you really got to dive into each line and really look at and analyze. What each fund is and what's going on inside each fund to get an overall snapshot and overall picture. But I didn't want to just throw this up there for you to see. Twenty-five million dollars is a, is a pretty big expense and it's, it's way up. Even three or four years ago, some of that is because of grants that we have received that we have not yet completed. We haven't spent the money, uh, fifth. Or excuse me, fifth base five of twelve west is a big part of why that's so big. City center park is going to provide that so big. So a lot of that is just rambling and we have been awarded, we're expecting to receive, but we haven't done the project yet. So we can't even reach for it. So that's why those numbers look big and scary, if that makes sense. This is the expense side of it because we are required to have a balanced budget. The expenses. Matched with uh, the revenue. So not, not a lot of change on the chart. This is a, a visual of all of the city revenue on a pie chart and you can see. Again, water department has grown so much this year because of that loan. Typically, that would be a much smaller percentage. But in capital projects would be a larger percentage of our budget. The general fund is also a big part of our budget. Like I said, we're going to talk about some of these, we're going to go through all of them, but start with the general fund because general fund is a. General fund is a fund that. Funds, things are not enterprise funds. So our roads, our parks, our recreation, city administration. Uh, some of the planning efforts and things that go along with that come out of the general fund. Things that don't have a specific fee. So water has a specific fee. That money goes into the water fund, not the general fund. So that's what I'm saying. It kind of gets confusing and messy, but the general fund is. Really quite often seems like it gets a lot of attention because of the taxes. And people get uptight and, and excited when we start talking about taxes. So, so this is the general fund. This is a visual of the last. Chart and you can see that the bulk of our, the general fund, even though the general fund. Is roughly a quarter of our actual revenue to the city. It, half of that is made up from taxes and we'll go into that in longer detail here. Second, it's also made up of administrative charges and charges for service. So those are the three. Charges for service are things that we do basically in the past through the call for dispatch center, which you know is a few meetings ago, they showed up and they requested an increase. So you can see that that fee or the amount of money. For ninety-one has gone up. Now, we don't have, correct me if I'm wrong here, and we don't include in, we basically just pass that straight through. We are charged that by the one dispatch center, we charge our citizens the same amount. So it's not exactly the same for the garbage collection services is really the other big one. And we charge ten cents per can as an admin fee. The rest of that just goes straight through to waste management. Now that number grew eight percent because we had to take a guess on the new, the new homes we think we're going to build over the next year. In addition to the contract with waste management says they're allowed to make an adjustment according to the CBI. So we kind of had to take a guess on that one, but that's why that one put up eight percent. And. The NY ninety one. So that's the bulk of the charges for service. Some of these other ones are, they're pretty small. The other one to watch is, is. Development fees. These are fees that come through. Reviewing of subdivisions, reviewing of development, things that go on there. We need to make sure that we're watching those fees and they're appropriately charged to. Ideally, in a perfect way, we would combine the development fees with the building permit fees with the stormwater fees. And that, some of those numbers would cover. The majority of the costs for. Staff members that deal with development. So a lot of Levi's time, a lot of Tom's time, certainly a lot of our bookworks inspector's time, our building inspector's time. And our stormwater inspector, like we, we try to make sure that fee is covering those. And we really keep an eye on it and we could adjust any one of those three, but the building permit fees are really locked down on what state has to do for us. Stormwater also is a little split. So this is the one that you can kind of. Play with and we need to make sure we watch that, make sure we're charging enough appropriately to cover those expenses. And, and we're pretty close. Uh, we're sitting terrible. I think it's about, we've covered about eighty-five percent. Of what we thought we should be covering. And there's a lot of assumptions that can be taken into there to make that a little bit different. So we feel fairly comfortable. Make sure we watch it, make sure we're covering costs, not passing those costs for development off to our citizens. The other big chunk of the general fund that you saw on that pie chart was the admin fees. Now the admin fees. The other big chunk of the general fund that you saw on that pie chart was the admin fees. Now, the admin fees come from our enterprise fund. So our rock sewer, stormwater fund, they have very specific fees that are associated with those into those funds. But there's a lot of things that happen that we pay for in a general fund to support our water and our sewer, such as our utility building, the software, our insurance, our accounting, staff time gets spread apart. So what this does is this is a way that the the legislature allows us to take money out of those funds to support things that are covered and paid for by the general fund. This is the breakdown. We really try to get detailed about what percentage of this line item over here, budget, what percentage of that should be covered by each one of those different utilities? And then we pull that money out of the utility and put it in the general fund to cover its costs. So that's it's a good chunk that will be put into our general fund. The other big one is our taxes. And this is where things get usually can get exciting when we're talking about the budget. And the big news here is that just while you say the ninth, what is the name?
Well, or late last week.
The ninth of June.
Is the game.
Monday, we received the certified rate. Now I know we we talked a lot about the tax and certified rates. Certified rate. And I, because we did that number until county does a bunch of stuff and state does a bunch of stuff, I had to make a lot of projections, a lot of assumptions and try to get as close as I can to what I think that number is going to be. I missed it just a little bit. Tax value is going to be higher. Basically, it it washed out a little bit. And from my estimate, the value of homes didn't go up as much as I thought it was going to go up, which means we had more coming from development. And so this gets interesting because I built this budget based on accepting the certified, what I estimated the certified tax rate to be. And that would mean there would be no truth in taxation or tax increase the way the state defines tax increase. So with that certified rate being one, is that close to what our certified rate was last year? And because of my pre-certified projections, even not getting a certified rate, I feel like we're just fine. We do not need to change the money that we budget coming into. We're actually should get a hundred and ten to one million, one hundred thousand dollars from our property tax if every single person in the city paid their property taxes on time. So we lower that number typically a little bit. In the past, that needs to wait. But uh this year, we put that number in and I think we're going to be just a couple thousand dollars short. Like you know, out of a hundred, we estimated this current fiscal year, we estimated we were going to receive one million fifty thousand dollars. And I think we're going to end up at one million forty-three thousand dollars. But we got more money in the way with taxes. So it's really close, I guess, with long-winded way of saying what I'm trying to say. So we, if you got, when we get into this, there, this budget is built not needing to do it for the taxation hearing. Now, also another big part of the tax is the sales tax. We only projected about a three percent increase in sales tax from what we we were going to get this year. And we were right on track to get really close. We'll probably maybe get me fifty thousand dollars more than what we expected to get. We should get about a four million or one million four hundred thousand dollars ish uh in out of sales tax. Sales tax is difficult because people pay it, it goes to state, the state messes around with it, comes back and tells us two months later, gives us that money two months later. So right now, we behind two months. So we have June. See, we have April, May, June, sales tax numbers still to come into the budget. And so we're we're fairly confident that we'll hit the we had budgeted really close and we're only going to bump it up a little bit for estimating our budget next year. So that, this gets a little messy here. The ma-mayors can have to help me mop this up, but I thought as staff, we thought we were being smart and trying to play both trends of we wanted the option for you to raise taxes if you wanted to or to take certified tax rate. So the more conservative approach was to schedule and line things out per the raising of taxes or the truth in taxation process. So what that did, when you check that box, that means that a public hearing, there's special requirements that have to happen for a public hearing. We can't have a public hearing with anybody else in the county that's having a public hearing. And so based on that, and that's our scheduled public hearing didn't happen until June twenty-sixth, which is our next meeting. So we were expecting to have our public official public hearing for this budget presentation at the next meeting. However, I didn't understand and I didn't realize that what that meant if we went down the other track and we set the certified rate that we would not make the required time to adopt this rate. So it's almost like if we're going to go certified rate, which is what I recommended, we need to decouple it from the finalization of the budget. And we should have had a resolution tonight that would have adopted the property tax rate. So what that means, unfortunately, and I am truly sorry about this and learned a lot this year, we need to have and schedule a special meeting to make that resolution happen. Prove that resolution before June twenty-third. Now, we do have a public meeting already scheduled next week on Tuesday, which is to take care of some of the general plan workshop issued items. Now, our hope was to make that pretty and now we got to really potentially add really a lot to that agenda, but we could do that, could advertise and have that re- resolution at that meeting. Beginning of the meeting and move on in general. So that that is a discussion we need to have tonight. We need to figure out, we can do that now. I can pause it when we hear that now. You can have the sit to do's at the end of this presentation. We could talk about that.
Your calls. But I think the decision's kind of like um bifurcated, right? So I think I would recommend to the council, first of all, decide if we will accept the certified tax rate, that sounds like a big important term. It's not as important as it sounds. It doesn't mean it's the right rate. It means it's the rate that the county assessor has certified to be the same amount of money that we would collect uh independent of what happens to the rate. And then property tax goes up, that means the rate goes down. But as Justin said, the amount of money to collect the same amount of money in property tax last year because of property values didn't change by much, that means the rate would also not change. So that's the first question. Um we accept certified rate, which is close to what this budget is built on, or you decide that we want to actually uh receive an increase in tax dollars with all of the assessments and everything else, sort of the certified assessment of property that goes on and therefore increase above the certified tax rate. And if that's the case, then we go through the truth in taxation process and we don't have to have a resolution to the county assessor by June first because we're going to deal with all of that in truth and taxation. So I mean, so that surprised us. Is normally the schedule that we used to look at the budget, workshop this, to you, give give people a chance to make the decisions. Uh we're able to meet the June twenty-first deadline uh that says we're going to accept certified rate without doing anything special. But this year, the periodicity of how a secret events line up, just like up like that um means that if we're going to stay with certified tax rate, I will call a special P for the council to adopt a resolution that says we're sticking with certified tax rate. And it would, it would, it would be relatively simple. The assessor asked me to just sign it. To just sign the piece of paper that says the council has adopted this resolution. Said, I can't do that. I'm being mostly against both. I can't sign the paper that says the council is going to adopt my tax rate. So we can't. I will sign it, but I won't sign it without the council's permission.
So but so maybe you assist in that decision. I can give you these next two slides.
Yeah. Norm, do you want to, do you want that emotion or?
I think we'll, I think we'll take justice, yes.
Yeah, these next two slides kind of try to outline if you want to consider a tax increase, what might be a relevant amount and the ramifications of that. Now, this this chart is a little outdated because my computer was, there's serious issues this week. Like I said, we need to get the the certified rate. So.
Are we going to talk about sales tax a little bit more in your presentation or can I put in a little?
No, we put sales tax.
Um I'm not going to get into a bunch of detail, but you guys know how the one percent local sales tax is with based on population, based on point of sale. Um what's really exciting about the general plan processes going through? And some of them, some of you are helping as a steering committee there, is we're going to get a really good understanding of number one, what's our sales tax leaky rate? Of the point of sale sales tax that Nibley citizens pay, how much of that leaves the city of Nibley? And that doesn't show up in any of these data, but is it science that's helping out?
Lewis, Robert, and you.
Helping is in the financial part of that. And so we will see a lot more information on sales tax. Uh how cities generate sales tax and how cities don't generate sales tax uh in the in the uh general plan update. So stay tuned for that, but.
Hey, Larry. Uh we did, we did make that population.
Oh, well, come to the mic and tell us what our sales tax leaky rate is. I think I have a pretty good guess, but if you've got the official number, lay it on us.
That eighty-two percent came from the statewide population redistribution and eighteen percent came
Right, from the point of sale.
Yes. Is that what you're?
There's another number I'm really interested in. And that is, yeah, so I understand. Yeah, I think that's in the verb, the verbage in the budget. How much of our sales tax revenue comes from the population distribution eighty two percent? And uh one minus that is the uh part that comes from point of sale. But what's more interesting to me and a number I have tried to figure out from those two numbers you gave me for a long time, but it it takes more information from inside the state tax commission to know this, what the leakage is. That is of the point of sale portion, the one half of the local option sales tax that our citizens pay, how much of that leaves Nibley City and goes to another entity, another taxing, another sales taxing entity? And I kind of know what it's going to be, but I'm going to keep you engaged on the general class, think about the development sides. Uh not guess at the number. We just need to build a wall around Nibley City and everybody that comes in to the city or leaves the city has to pay an excise tax. Logan will pay for the lead ball.
I was joking because my answer is going to be sweet for talk about terrorists.
Okay, so we'll have more information on sales tax because of the process of going through.
Okay, so. With a certified rate, that will increase our property tax income that we received last year by about fifty thousand dollars. If you were to, so this number here is pretty close. So you can kind of disregard this could be wrong, but the red box is what our rate was two I think about ten years ago. And blue boxes are our oldest sort of rate. Nibley used to, for a long time, hold the oh oh sixty-six, seven, six hundred as the property tax rate year after year, every year, every year. There was a few times three years ago when the values of homes just increased so dramatically, we decided that wasn't right. We couldn't do that. We shouldn't do that. Shouldn't sustain that. So we went with the, the way it point, what it used to be to what it was, uh it's we want.
Not not just homes, but all of the property.
And so what, so all the hell that brings to me is that, you know, if the, if a person had a five hundred thousand in Nibley City and you adopted a new grade of oh one four eight, they would be paying about fifty bucks for a year. Then they would not adopt certified rate. Or if it was blue rate, oh six seven, they would be going at about a hundred bucks a year. So that would amount to a bulk of the homes Nibley did that based on how their values. This rate would bring in an extra hundred and fifty-four thousand. This rate would bring in another three hundred thousand dollars. And because of the amount of the budget built the way it is, really what that money would be used for would be money that would be basically put into savings and put in to pay for capital projects. So again, that goes back to our earlier discussion. The way we're budgeting and every single year we are paying for capital projects, but the dollar in budget is paying, that says that has been shrinking and shrinking and shrinking, but then we're paying less, we're actually spending this than we budgeted to spend. And so that money is also going to be in. We've been putting in almost anywhere from a half a million to a little bit more than that every single year. Yeah. So is that a lot making sense? Yeah. Um and so this next chart, I think is super interesting because this shows you what all the earth counts cash value are doing and what their property tax or rates are in this column. And this is a ratio of what their crap tax rate is compared to. Logan and we're Logan are interested because they actually have two property taxes, one for their general fund and for the library. So you kind of have to add those two together. But if you took High Park, for example, they, that's too close to us. If you add them together, you you could see that they were, they their citizens pay a less property tax rate than we do. But if you add up the amount of money that brings, they actually receive about one and a half times more money. Which means they have more, their value, their homes are just higher. So even though the rates just it's kind of fascinating. You need to kind of look at this chart and look at the different cities about what their value, what their tax and values are, what their rates are and how much that really means. And so you can really look at this chart and just kind of compare it to what what we're doing here. And in Nibley, we are, we do have property tax compared to all these other cities, I guess, on this chart. And and that is because we we don't have that sales tax income, right? We don't have the amount of sales tax. So as we go through the general plan process, people think about who can and think about, you know, people don't want more homes, they don't want townhouses. But if that's truly the case and you don't want those things to happen, then you're probably going to pay more property tax because you don't have the opposite effect coming into. So if you want sales tax, you need more homes, you need more business, you know, get businesses, so you give homes. And that's what uh Fred was telling us as we go through this general plan process, you really need to look at that and decide what kind of city you want to be and really flush that out of the pump and help them understand that if you want to stay better than you today, you want to have have a big boss, expect to pay a hundred point tax. And that's reflected here in this chart.
Okay, so just so I understand, this chart is, this is Tom's sales tax. So Logan, for example, they, their property taxes, point three seven seven, or there's ours, being a low drop estimated.
Their rate.
Rate.
Wait, seven percent.
Yeah. But because they have more homes, they're bringing
Correct. If you bring it seven and a half times, I mean, just the rate of property tax, the amount of money that we bring in, even though the credit is for uh forty, thirty-seven percent bar rate.
And so same thing like in Smithville. Smithville is point nine eight percent. Or point nine eight, so that's ninety-eight percent of what are this.
About one, about the same.
About the same.
Yeah.
Because they have more homes, they're bringing in one point seven seven four property.
Correct. And may, and maybe not necessarily the number of homes, but taxable value. So I mean, there's a bunch of things to play into the taxable value, whether it's value of the home, number of phones, you know, me. It's not exactly just number of homes.
So we have the highest tax rate of any.
Yep. This is last year's rate. I don't know what they're proposing this year. And I don't know if their certified rate is up this year. This was kind of put together a month ago or so.
Yeah, I mean, again, you have to, you have to add the two property taxes in Logan. The regular property tax plus the laboratory tax.
But even still.
Even still. Um that's right. There are a number of cities like us that are close, like Smithfield's point nine eight, that's one to me. Um but it kind of makes me wonder how we got away with the one six hundred. You always know where to say before I say it. How we got away with that. Maybe brushing those.
Okay, so I'm hoping though those two slides are really helping you figure out the side what the, if you're interested in going through the truth in taxation process. What the, if you're interested in going through the taxation process, how much extra revenue we bring in, there is a whole bunch of public process, public hearing, people get riled up. Super excited about when you raise taxes, which is an interesting phenomenon, happened to a, another. Entity in our areas where they had a, a pretty, what I thought. Reasonable property tax increase. And people came out of the woodworks upset about it. And then showing their effects, the sales tax increase, you'll probably pay more money, and I don't know what the global paper made it up.
No problems about it.
Yeah.
Hey, I mean, county adopted, I don't mind. County adopted an increasing state tax that will generate. Couple million dollars.
It's pretty small.
And it's for the average. Sales tax that they adopted thanks to the legislature enabling it will generate about twelve million. On a full year, it'll be about nine million because it's partial care. But those are all taxes.
I don't know, it's like their. Budget year council. I haven't yet to do a truth in taxation.
Hang around. You gotta, you gotta listen to the year. And truth in taxation is a process to go through if you're going to. Collect more money ignoring this growth, collect a dollar value number.
And ignoring inflation.
And, and it actually is the opposite of inflation. Says if we're gonna collect more money on property tax, more absolute dollars, ignoring new growth. Uh, for one year compared to the next, then we go through a truth in taxation process, except a lower tax rate. If property values went up. It's interesting that when you pay. Capital gains tax, that's, that's all about paying inflation tax. On the other hand, property tax is all about not paying inflation tax.
Okay, this is a, just a graphical representation of how taxes we fly. So you can see that even though we don't have a lot of point sales tax, we do still get a lot of. Sales tax money into our revenue stream than we do. So even though we don't have a. Still getting those sales tax. Dollars. All right, so now I'll get. Expenses of the general fund and things that have changed, you know, and costing us more money. This is.
Do we want to talk about rate?
Okay, yeah, good. Yeah, I mean, I think what I would ask the council to do. Uh, cause you can't. Tell us tonight because we have. Utah public meetings, requirements and so on. You can't tell me tonight that you're going to adopt one rate or another rate, but what you can tell. Is that you would like us to schedule a special meeting where you could adopt a certified rate. Or that you intend to go through the truth in taxation process, which moves this whole thing down.
And you said if we, if we were to do a special meeting next Tuesday, there would be enough time for posting announcement.
Yes, and, and we've been through this forwards and backwards. I'm convinced there's no public hearing on that resolution. Given the timing that the state requires, when we receive the certified rate, when we have to let the city county. Uh, assessor know if we're going to adopt certified rate. There flat out is not time to schedule.
Yeah.
So we're gonna go do this, we will have the public hearing in conjunction with the. Uh, adoption of the budget, it'll be not tonight's first reading, but the second reading on, on the budget, we will, we will deal with public hearing. We will do public hearing on that as we adopt the budget. Okay? But there is not time to schedule a public hearing. Between when we receive the certified rate and when we have to tell the assessor we're going to. Uh, go with the certified rate. And guess what? If, if, uh. If, if someone says we were supposed to do a public hearing and you guys know I'm all about public hearings, no matter who shows up, so. The, the, the remedy is to do it over again with public hearing. So. It doesn't undo what happened, but does undo what happened, but you have, we have a chance to do it all over again, which will make us later than the twenty-first June when the assessor. I think you guys are about to tell me whether you consent to a special meeting to consider adopting certified rate.
And do you think we'll have a call? I guess we have enough, it's about to form unless Tuesday meeting.
No, I. I would really like, I'm sorry, I would, that Tuesday meeting to me. We're going to advertise that. As a city council meeting because we could, I hope we will have a forum that has assembled to talk about that topic.
Yeah, okay.
It's not that we're going to have that meeting to talk about this topic. So I'm, I don't want to dilute. That focus on the. On the, uh, on the, the, the general plan. So instead, what I would suggest is we'll find a time. Uh, when we can achieve core, we have to have an anchor location, so I'll be here. And then all the rest of you can be remote. And actually participate. With, with minutes and with YouTube and everything else. Uh, you all can. Can participate remotely to. Consider adopting the certified rate.
But it would need to be soon.
That it needs to be before the twenty-first of June, it would have to be next week.
Can't do next Thursday, except tall.
And so it's similar to heritage days, but heritage days is pretty light, white, white, white can be a holiday, what holiday?
Yeah, what holidays? Yeah, so.
Monday, Mondays, it's observed in Utah. This meeting, we're, it's just a. So you were about to move on to Tuesday meeting because.
Yes. I think in, in my wildest dreams, you know, most optimistic. View, we're gonna, we're gonna have a bunch of people here. Tell us what Nibley wants to be, what they want.
We're making a big push to get them here.
And then it just, I, I mean, I'm not afraid to have obviously a public meeting about certified tax rate. We can take you guys to taxation if that's what you want to do, that's fine. But it just. It's, it's like, I want that focus of. Enthusiast for, come and tell us what Nibley wants to be. And. Uh, virtue. And I don't know that you're gonna be here for, uh. Probably, sorry, for the, for the.
Workshop.
Workshop, um, gentlemen. That, that you don't have to be there, but probably be involved at a Nibley city. City council meeting, in case there's a forum of you here. But we need a forum of you here. For this group. So you want to have a special meeting?
Let's have a special meeting. I don't. Did you, I'm, I'm good to do a zoom or?
I want to have a special meeting, and if you guys want to go through two to taxation, you can tell me in that meeting. Go up to your taxation. So we will find a time, I think Thursday. Midday, right? Would be. Good for a lot of homes.
Good old poll, good poll.
So. We'll, we'll find a time. Meeting dinner is Friday.
You.
For that. I'm also umpiring that whole day, but I'm gonna be here for the community dinner. My retirement starts are getting in the way of retirement. Marion is a retired job, too. Friday, I, I kind of like Friday. What if we did it between dinner and the, the community dinner and the, uh, play?
No, if you work with me.
We can run over here, have a meeting, run back. Let's do that. Okay, so we're gonna move forward setting up, uh, and we'll pull the audience. See when you're available, and we have to notice it. By the day before it happens.
Yeah, okay, we'll, we'll mail that down.
Excellent, and we will be better on paying attention to the schedule. County assessor, no, don't. Don't worry about it, the, the county assessor. Guys may not be aware of this, so. Oh, by the way, what if we don't give the county assessor the number by the twenty-first June?
You get it anyway?
Then it goes to the state tax commission and they will decide the. Rate for Nibley City. Guess what they will probably assign?
Yeah.
Just gonna go back to them.
I mean, they could punish us and lower our rate below the certified rate. But I kind of doubt they would do that. I doubt they will go above the certified race and rate and force us through the, through the taxation process. Let's test it, let's see. Let's talk to Nick, it's. What the tech, my two. Okay, we're, we're calling the bot on pitcher coach for the pitching team says, Larry, if you don't call the bot, there's nobody. Let's let, let's let the state.
Let's set up a beef.
All right, so. One of the people we're getting expensive on, you know, for salaries and we certainly know that our. That here at the city, we have amazing staff that work hard, do whatever they can to make life for the citizens better. And you guys supported that with the worth of work study that we did. A few months ago. This is my slogan, this is the H R S for the city, talking in, let's do that study, showed us how to. Poll survey results of what other salaries from. Other municipalities our size and in our area and try to figure out where our ranges should be for salaries and then where individuals, based on their experience and their worth. All fit and all where shake out on, on where they need to be and what they should be paid. So we did that a few months ago. I thought it was interesting and it just, I saw a headline and I thought, sure, we're meeting up, but just, just recently, the sheriff, who was here a couple. Last meeting, talked about how we need to increase the contract and his rep increasing the contract was to increase the amount of hours that he would contract for. But he witnessed that he was gonna have to look at the power of the wage, just to figure out a way to creep that up to a, well, well, and when he went to the county. He requested the county, I believe it was about a twelve percent increase for deputies and less than that for the, some of the administration. Staff and what's going on, but he told the same thing that I told you guys when we did the word of the word, said. We can make this happen in current budget with the way the budget is built now, but the next budget year might be a bit of a bump. So I'm here to show you that bump now to be, hopefully I made that very clear, we'll through that at the time. But, uh, all in all, based on that word of the word and based on us providing a three percent cost of living adjustment to our employees. And up to a possible three percent for merit if supervisors, and I believe that they deserve. Out of a bunch of meetings about trying to be hopeful about that and how we want to go about making sure those, those pay for performance raises are merited and. And so we'll continue to have those some discussions amongst staff, but, but this budget allows us to be able to give that three percent call it's three percent possible. Merit, but we need, we tried to really focus and get rid of that funding budget as we narrowed down when. Every employee is going to be getting those bumps. So in July, we will give the cost of living adjustment three percent and pay for performance. Will not happen until six months later in January is when staff will be eligible to be able to receive that bump based on the process and things we've placed at that time. So by kind of lining them all out, we get, we kind of knit down our budget for salaries. And in addition to that, asking about about a three percent after I calculated everything I could to try to do as close as I could and put a three percent cushion on that. This year, I dropped that cushion to one, five percent because I feel pretty confident about. And when these dollars are gonna roll out of our budget, and so. All that shakes out with about a seven percent increase to the salaries. Budgeted for this next fiscal year. Does that make it sense? Thank you. Yeah, so same one requires, it used to require that accessory. Might get these worked wrong, I apologize. It used to be that you had to have a mayor and a council and do actual. Some organs, sorry. They're components to give the council a raise. Last year, there was law ran that requires now not only that, but you have to show and all of the department heads. We have our statutory officer, so we wanted to be turning it last year, it was basically, we kind of just. Overkill it, but basically at all of our department head, it's usually manager, I would list, and so you'll see these numbers. Oh. These that'll. Next agenda, but, but you're right, that is to check that box requirement for table one, we'll have. A hearing with that and second reading the next page, so the work.
Okay, I had. Question, but I'll say that it's.
Okay. Uh, that also does. Historically, the council has adopted the same cost of living adjustment. As what staff is off, is offered. Because there was a time when that didn't happen and. The council felt like there needed to be a big jump to kind of get it into a range where it needed to be, so they made that big jump and it is instrumented this policy of. Just adopting the same cost of living, so that's what's proposed in that, that ordinance, if you, if you, if you would like to change that in. All in all, we spent about two million dollars on salaries and about a million dollars on benefits, which is, that is go dead. Which is about twelve percent. Of the overall revenues for the city, so about twelve percent spent on. Salaries and benefits. So this, this next two charts shows you what other municipalities in the state are doing. The three percent and the three percent I feel is. Fairly generous and personally, that's where I would like to be, I'd like to, I'd like to be a little bit better than what everybody else is doing, but this is a chart that shows what there, a lot of people are doing. It's a lot of them are three percent and full up, four percent for merit, but not both. And so I don't care about this whole thing, just, just to point out that the three to three, I believe is, it, it is generous. I, it's better than what people say. Their pace in my game, one day, once it's, uh. Up there.
So you're saying the three percent full of plus the three percent merit?
Right. It's, yeah, it's, it's a little bit, it's a little bit. For, for, for everybody that submitted their data to this kind of inbox for them.
What, what percent of employees? Do you think will receive the three percent merit?
That's a great question. Great question. Okay. We have, and I would expect a lot. Uh, we also have like, you know, a couple of other scheduled adjustments just based on small facilities. Changing. So. That's a great question. You know, all the time, like I said, we have a great staff. Fantastic staff, so I would dare say a lot of them. But we have to narrow down kind of a lot of discussions. We've started an executive meeting, trying to meet every two weeks to kind of really hammer out. A policy and process for doing that. It's kind of morphed into two contracts. We're trying to come up with this way of mentoring and. Meeting with our employees and educating, teaching them to be better and try to be better than. Having kind of this system set up to do that, it's not directly tied to a checkbox of whether or not they get. The pay raise, we're trying to come up with kind of. So we're still working on exactly, I would say. So any other costs that dawn up in the general fund or your insurance are a lot, there's a couple of our insurance items that are tied to salaries, so the salaries go up, your insurance will go up. Information technology services continues to always create more. For internet and software and things that, you know. So that cost is, is, is continuing to create, we thought we were gonna have the big jump on our utilities, but in, in studying that. What reason we thought we'd be big jumps and we got COVID, the best. Did is bringing fiber line to city hall, so we do have fiber. We also paid you a five year. In this service, that five years of is over next year, so we're gonna have to figure out, right now, we basically two, we have Comcast and fiber and now we're gonna have to pay. Do we need to go back to one, we're gonna have some of those discussions. Do we need to go back to one? We have some of those discussions, but our utilities rates are what we're paying. Internet specifically is gonna go up and it'll rock you out of power. It's been talking for years, a year and a half now about trying to get their rates increased. I know there was some pushback, list later on that, but they're working through that. They're continuing to try to to boost that. Our biggest cost for power comes from the levels pumping water. It's it's, you know, it's not exorbitant cost, but it is, it is, uh, it will hit us. So utilities always continue. Uh, elections are small, but a small number, but we didn't have. An election last year, so there was no money in that lineup for next year. This year we had, you know, obviously we have an election now. On my to do list at the end of this team, one of the things we can decide since we've learned since declaration period, so we could drop that number a few thousand dollars. If you do not have a primary, we can do that or we can just uh. Just let it roll and know. Keeps going with bank charges, credit card fees, every time we swipe a card, we take a. You know, we have to watch our fees for when we take payments over the phone. There's extra charges for that and. So bank charges continue to go up. You guys are well aware of nine on one charts that was just presented to us a month and a half ago or so with. Lowing city nine one dispatch center, that's on. Sheriff and animal control, obviously we're just here as well. We already talked about how it's gonna go up for the C P I. The library that's a great that we agreed to a couple of months ago. Almost doubled our library fee, so those were going up. Asset lines and the cost of engineering continues to go up. And you'll see a big bump in some of the master plan lines this year because some of the master plans weren't completed this year. So we rolled some of that money forward. Meaning we didn't spend it all this year, but we had to put a little extra in this year. Those lines look a little goofy, but there are some good issues with match plans. The other one, big, I mentioned earlier about trying to cut out the the cushion. The other big item we really focused on this year in the budget was our education, travel and training. Uh, those expenses have gone up drastically and just getting people to different places is costing a lot of money. So. I really appreciate staff really going through that. There isn't a staff member that that didn't cut really. Some education and training that they had in the gym last year or you really kind of. You'll see even with that. Or if you're just trying to get a few or if you guys have certifications. And so even though we as a whole would come. So education, travel, training was just something that we we fought carefully. We accept the subject and we make sure that we're doing that hard, we're inverted, but those 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 have gone up. So all in all. About the six percent increase in general. So, um, the other big form. Necessities that we need to see are promising. So we have. Got projects when this is straight out of your budget, you can see we did this back in two thousand.
I know twenty one was the most recent, but yeah.
Well, you can see it's written across all the stuff that we've completed. So when you see over here twenty six, twenty seven, some of this stuff we've already completed. But some of this bigger stuff that we were looking to get to now and even last year, we haven't been eight quite able to finish. Dear friend, we trust. And so uh in our parks, we're a little bit behind on our parks, bump us back. We also need to keep in mind. In for this plan, we talked about expansion of public works facility and lots of the seams down there. If anybody would go in and take it forward to that place. They do cram a lot of stuff and they're pretty, pretty, it's not much stuff is in there, but at some point you need to start looking at what's next for the public works facility. And so this is just to show you that, you know, we're. We're handling some spots a little behind on others, but we are trying to follow the capital project master plan as as closely as we can. These are the capital projects that in the master plan. Most of these should not be a surprise to you if they're from the past and some being rolled over this year. The big one is this big one on top is phase five of twelve hundred plus, which we'll talk about here terribly probably. A lot of that may come from the car. We have about an eight. But we have to have two point two million dollars to build phase five of twelve less. Capital improvements is mostly a. With the mower as well as a s- small tractor and one of the things is we. Exhausted the light of heated pressure washer that we use quite extensively to make sure we get solved off the vehicles, kind of make the vehicles. They go out and plow lasts as long that things, we have band aided that thing as much as we can. So there's a new pressure washer in there. That's it, that one. Here every year, you know, we don't end up spending that. We got five thousand dollars to repair those in the county, a certain that the county did. And we were. Because of the way they got them, we had to do that move on, you know, make some repairs, leave a bunch of money that just continued to do so. I don't think we've spent any of that in the. And thought says. Just keep moving, don't spend this way. The forty five dollars is full. The completion of the. feasibility study. So we didn't quite spend our full ninety this year. This is just rolling what's left. Nubly City Center Park, otherwise other also known as Regine Park is another big expense of this two point eight million dollars. I think. Pocket is only roughly half of that, maybe less than half of that. Some, a lot of that's. Patient and for the water conservation fund. So rent. Between us and joint park development here, us being city hall person. Park signs is a project we've been doing over the years. We put some money to try to uh make our beautify our parks a little bit. Uh, Levi's been working on this quite a while with Randy, try to get some kind of refining. And make it to this part by building this route and things like that. So that's just kind of an ongoing continuing project. And we completed some projects over the last year. That's the next few lines. There's no money budget for those.
Security upgrades include uh park security upgrade.
So we, Rob, Steve and I had quite a bit of discussion about the park or what's to do for security. Upgrades. I know the last two years we've had pretty large ticket items with keyless entry or. Sorry, we're uh promote the key balls kind of thing as well as security camera system. They have some minor things they need to finish up and complete on that. We looked at the benefit of the benefit versus the cost of including. Camps in our parks and that cost compared to what it takes to take care of a lot of vandalism and really feel like. You know, we're gonna try some other things first. We're gonna do some tiny blocks and just spend a lot less money to see if we can make a difference. On a vandalism and things like that. So we are not anticipating spending a large amount of money on security this year. Next year, we'll see how it will go, but but just to make it possible to do the things that at our parks that we've done here, we could do a standard communication network. Which is towers and radio equipment that we currently use to operate our water and sewer system. And that that's a pretty big expense just to do that. And then on top of that, we've got the next cameras. So as we went through it, Rod, Steve and I decided that we'd want to try a few other little smaller things this year before we pull trigger on those big ticket. Security. So this is page two, the capital projects. Pedestrian safety improvements, we've had a lot of discussion about this one. I don't think we're, we, you know, we had, we had this, what's that line called down here? There was a grant we were applying for, face streets for all. Where we often spend the money we had budget this year. Doing a bunch of projects to support that grant. We didn't end up getting that grant. So we budgeted money to do some of those projects. This is clear, I obviously have time to get them done. So we're the the big one. That's on tap right now is to put a mid block crossing from Mandarin Park over to Regine Development to try to give. People a way to cross thirty two hundred south after our events and just the, you know, the trails that go from there. And so we're just trying to. Implement some of those things to try. So that's really the pedestrian safety improvement. We have planned now, I did, like I said down here, there we are. I have that same grant in. We believe we have a better option. Once they've seen our application, sometimes it takes two, three times to get into some of these grants. And so that's what that project varies. And we might have. Some of those projects are, they were to temporary. Bullabouts and kind of do some temporary things so that we could show before and after effect on traffic to see if there was. It good in uh, what am I trying to say? Good result from the test. And if there was good results, then we can go back then for. The bike park base two B, now we're facing this little views and continuing to call this bike park until we get the bike park done. You're gonna hear one part. Is that was most kind of way of early grant applications, even though we officially named the park city center park. So I hope that doesn't confuse people. About to keep track of that, but the same hundred thousand dollars we had budgeted, we were hoping to get four hundred thousand dollars from. Wraps and four hundred, an additional four hundred thousand from. We have heard that we are not gonna get the, we've got about two hundred from wraps. So we need to make a decision at some point. To try to figure out how to use the two hundred grand we got from wraps. And not jeopardize that money while continuing because the same principle applies and will apply for the. Your grant again, and we have a better shot at this. Might try and get another four hundred. That would be sixty degree. And that will be two hundred out of pocket. That makes sense. So this one is just gonna kind of flow and be fluffy until we kind of get some things figured out, figured nailed down. We'll make sure we keep you in the loop on it. But at some point, we're gonna have to decide if we just want to spend our money and get that done. Continue to try to milk it out, getting these these grants. That's one we'll just have to watch. The west regional storm drain line is a line from the development that is called the Fields. Otherwise formerly known as the Gibbs Forest Track property, north of thirty two hundred, southwest of twelve hundred west. There's some pretty amazing, if anybody's interested, videos of some of the flooding that's gone on there over the years. We've had large melt and large break minutes. And so. With the development coming in, we thought it's a great time to pay some money, try to solve that issue. Or at least do everything we could to minimize that issue, that tail piping all the way from the northwest corner of that property. Straight west all the way to the Hyrum Slough, which would be as Tom and I, we believe will be an amazing benefit to that area of town. Really help out the water situation. So Tom's working quite extensively with a developer on that. The engineering works, we recovered there, but that is what that money is heading towards to structure that. Now that line from. Was actually a loop on property. We have an existing easement now that gets most of the way there. We have talked to them about obtaining the reach to that easement. They seem bored with that. We're just working through some of those details. So hopefully that project will solve a pretty large problem we've had in that area for a long time. One of the other new ones is. This twenty six hundred south range of sidewalks. Twenty six hundred south is one of the oldest placed area to town. As that also has the newly entry school. And one of the issues, safety issues with that school is that he, because there's no curb gap, people are using the space between the edge of the asphalt and sidewalk to park. And wait for their kids to be picked up from school. And when school gets out there, there's a large group of kids that comes out and tries to walk down that bike was. Wide sidewalk. Some of them, they'll be in the street, the kid on bikes, they want to wait for the walkers. So they're out in the street. So we've made some. Well, we've had discussions with and the school is interested in widening that sidewalk. And while we're widening that sidewalk, we might as well do some curb gap or reduce some drainage improvements. Know that some of those little spots get pretty monkey and muddy. And so we, oh, Tom has put together an estimate to make that work. We have not really gone out to the public yet on that. We need to do a, a, you know, go talk to these people and help them understand what we're trying to do. There's, because it's so old, there's a lot of history with twenty six hundred south and the existing sidewalk. And there's some residents that were around them that went in and they. Strong feelings about things they think were going to happen back then didn't. So I believe that most of them should be happy with this project. But we still gotta work through that. So we're just plugging in the number right now. I'm gonna start working way down that. Training to widen that sidewalk with that safety improvement for the school. I know they would be really happy with that. Any questions there? That's kind of, that's pretty new. I don't think you guys have heard of them at all. So, you know, we're looking at, see what we can do. We may. And hopefully two hundred fifty thousand dollars is up. We're doing one side of the room and give the other side at the same time. We have some decisions we kind of need to iron out there, but that's kind of our first chunk and trying to trying to get it. The next one is uh thirty seven thousand dollars. This was a little bit unique because. There is a great opportunity that Cash County is pursuing. To try to make forty four hundred south. The future highway between eighty nine ninety and sixty five. One of the one popular there main street to try to get it on the forty four south. So this is improved the. Faces of discussion and being talked about. Studies through there and one of the things that the county has done is provide a grant for a million dollars, right? I got a million bucks. I'm not, I apologize, I can't remember exactly what that number is, but they've gone out to the municipalities in the area. For assistance and need to match for that. So our portion of that agreement between us, Hyrum. Well, still in the county.
Walzville? Yes, three, three communities.
Would be thirty seven thousand dollars. The streets. Check or repair because of. That building was built, I believe, about twenty years ago and due to the nature of those, that equipment being out there and some of the salt. And talked about spraying off this pressure washer, the solder messed up the floor of that shop in some pretty key location. Into the floor. It's actually created some pricking hazard. So we're asking for thirty five thousand dollars to go on there for. That would just basically rip out the parts that are tore up and nasty. Or a new floor with a better slope that would get water out of there. Hopefully not have this problem happen. Well, that's what that is. So this next chart is, if you already see, this is just all the new stuff, all the new capital. Right? So I don't need to go over again, but are you reading questions on capital projects? It's kind of a big portion of the budget.
The the million dollar thing is actually through the C M P O, but it's not the result of local ops sales tax. That go through the council. It's actually money from the federal highway administration that is. Branded to the cash, cash metropolitan planning organization. And so the mayor's side, what they would like that money to go to, and there's still a little bit of competition within Cash County. But that's the million dollars, even though it comes through C N P O, it's not. Cosma from the local option sales tax, it's federal highway administration. A million dollars won't build that, but there's some concern. So start device.
Yeah, I think that was the key with their training.
It's an interesting road for us because we proposed that as the dividing line. I wrote, so.
Well, the next, so for bass and water departments. Water, water system, water, most water impact fee fund with twenty combination of those few. Falls continue here, water system, big news is the well, well, what's going on there and all the. Process I mentioned alone that we've got. So we also. Because of the staff turnover, things that are going on in the age of our existing water master plan, we really want to hit that hard this year. Jokingly told these guys that we're gonna seal this thing with our bloody thumbprint to make this plan set of stone. Give us our direction, give us our direction and just for the next five years. So the master plan. We're kind of in the middle of a couple of partners right now, so we're trying to build something. Finish that before we move on to this one, but we didn't want to give the water master plan redone. Other increasing costs in the water park mostly come from the water meters. Those just continue to go up and up. They're changing them. So if you can't replace parts, you have to buy a whole new meter. So water meters are. So water meters are an increase in expense, now a lot of those meters are from new, and as we. Build new things, we charge that cost for the meter to the development. However, there's a lot of. Meters that have been in the system in the city for close to twenty, twenty-five years now, we're starting to see those go out. So as those go out, we're returning them to the company, getting whatever pro rate amount of warranties left on that meter, having to purchase new meters to replace. Meters that are going out. We're very anxious about that, and trying to make sure we stay on top of it. So we're trying to find that, so when is there a duty to. Ace, get a different one if you can, but. Just a lot of, we're not entirely, should not hit, so more meters to continue. The only continues to go up is the water shares since now these. Was becoming quite substantially over the last few years, so those are kind of the increasing costs to water. So we're wanting to change. We have some money invested in there to figure out. Sign for the south, reach the list station, as I did when I was supplying, amended to. Nineteen-ish west, so that we can reduce the need or the size of this. List station is just kind of the next step of planning and creation, s- searing that area of town. Which is related to uh some. Issues and things that are going on in the area. Doesn't have too much money, so we didn't. Do a lot with the stormwater fund, that's why that stormwater project that I mentioned earlier is coming out of Capital Republic, it's not stormwater. Now, we did take a pinch on the movie out of the stormwater fund last year, a sweeper, so that's why that fund is. A little bit on the lower side of things, which is why. We're, we have, we didn't change much or add much in that department, we just can let it roll, fill that fund back up a little bit. Tom mentioned that we're giving the stormwater master plan, as part of that master plan, we are looking at. Adjusting what we were charging for the stormwater rates. Believe, off of memory. It was pretty simple, what we're giving the water rate, it was about two bucks. Ish. Per month, increased from eight to ten bucks a month. So that is all yet to become, yet to be decided and determined by you, who will have all that master plan and all that laid out for you. Hopefully within two months. Okay, I already mentioned this, somebody go over, we, we had the education trial for anybody, bring up here. The other one that continues to find with software, this is all software that we use. Throughout the city, the big one is Cassell, which is our utility billing, our accounting. We do a lot of work through Cassell, civic review, there's a lot of permitting, a lot of. Dog licensing, a lot of ways that we interact with public, people applying for things and. Cover your cost of, but, but that, that software is not cheap, but it also has been. And a great asset to us, we've really cut down a lot, a lot of that versus staff. The other big, and we're gonna back this. I didn't. Do what I want to, but uh is this big one down here, this was twenty-three thousand dollars for an asset management software. And what the asset management software is, way for us to take our G I S, take all our water meters, our fittings, every. Basically, any asset that we own to see this outgoing. We put all G I S, which is probably most of that's already in there, but this is a way for us to track each individual. System and decisions on replacements and maintenance and things that we should be doing to manage all those, those assets. This is a. Thing. For us, it's required to have an asset management program to go to the state and get the loan that we have now. That part's pretty low, this software is gonna be put as miles ahead of the bar that we need to meet to have the asset management, but. Because it is such a big ticket item and because. Get ahead of ourselves a little bit. I can put it in the budget, but I want you to tell me whether you want me to take it out of the budget. Whether you want me to leave it in the budget, knowing that we will not pull that trigger, we will not spend that big, and tell me that to agenda, and to you guys to explain what it is. What we fit. Buy to us and provide to the city. And give you the opportunity to tell us in full entry. So.
And that's it, your subscription.
Guys, it's your, well, it's twenty-three thousand dollars for first year, I believe the end of subscription is. It's high, but I don't think it's quite that high. Eighteen off of memory. It's pretty. But there is a little bit of setup, so like I said, all those details. Laid out in front of yous. To do that, but currently it is built in the budget now, I'll have the same discussion with. Software that we have been leaving and having discussing about. Code enforcement software to track things, help us be efficient, faster. Be able to get in and out of places that we need to be, and I thought I already put that in the budget, but that one needs to be. So I'd like to see these out, I'd either, I'd like to do the same thing for both, either we pull over them. And not pull the trigger, it's gonna probably agenda item for you, or just pull them out of the budget. Bring me the agenda item for you guys and then amend the budget. To actually pull the trigger, so that makes sense. Probably. Yeah, it could be pretty. Every time we get full. Time, our agendas are gonna be short next, and now we got a twenty-five.
Yeah, so how much is the code enforcement software, it's what, twelve thousand dollars?
I think it's twelve thousand for the upstart and then more like seven going forward.
So to be, I'm putting costs on meeting next year's one. Into next year's budget for the upfront cost, and then the years following. Next year should be reduced pretty close to what we're at budgeted now.
So we have asked Justin to narrow this gap. Of conservancy. Being surveys, conservative, but underestimate revenues and overest. Since leading in the budget is example. Overestimating the expenses. Saying. Or having the opportunity, decided we probably don't wanna spend that money. Justin's promising that we would be able to look at the details before we. Spend that money, he'll live up to that. But that's a conservative approach to, to budgeting. Loses a little bit of actions. So that's. I don't think you need an answer right now, but. We can get that in the final version.
For sure, by next. All right, we've already known this. Even though. Our staff have a lot of wishes, this is a wish list, the things that we hope to. Obtain or accomplish over the next few years, the big ones are on the bottom, public works, facility expansion. Missed back truck, we want to stay on top of our back truck and make sure that we're staying in the sweet spot of what that thing's worth and selling it and getting a new one versus just letting it. Driving it to the ground. So, the city hall's been discussed. Pretty full of city hall, we got. Start a struggle. Maybe we can make some minor adjustments between now and then, the other big one moving out there is. These fellow stuff, study of the now single recreation, just want to keep these kind of things on you guys radar. Continuing the discussion and expecting to see these kinds of things in the future.
Right.
These are not baked into the budget, these are not. Alright, this is, sorry, wrapping this thing up. Things that we have left to do to put a ball in this budget and be done this, this year is the decision on the two softwares we just talked about, how we handle that in the budget. If you want to load any additional expense due to the primary to do that. Oh, the, this Florida bullet is the big one that just came up. Couple of weeks ago, I was reached out to by the, I remember cemetery did the building. Or Nibley, Nibley Cemetery. That uh that is currently exists over in Millville, they have. They have, see, they are taxing authority, they have the authority to tax. They have the line on. Taxable. It's a very small amount, but they do have the authority to tax people. To fund the cemetery. They are looking at a project to expand and construct a road. They have contracted with county staff and county resource to actually construct the road. So they feel like they're getting a really good deal on the road. But they just reached out and want to know if Nibley City would like to help them pay for that. I didn't get a lot of any other details of, I believe he said that they were gonna build it for forty thousand dollars. So it's, it's just kind of a request that came in from the cemetery board. On helping them construct that. That's, that's all.
Do you want a discussion on that?
Well, I think. She's shit with no notes, so I doubt. No notes, good participation. Assist or not. This just kind of came up.
So this is a road in Millville, in the cemetery.
Yeah.
To benefit cemetery.
Yeah.
Which benefits. Not newly citizens, but benefits those of us that live in the cemetery district.
Right.
And they have the power to generate money by doing their own taxes and doing their own expenses, but. Their proposal is that we would help them build that road.
Yeah, they just asked if you would like to help them.
And they also asked me.
I don't know, I said, I'm, I could find that out. That kind of.
I think they should look at. Building another cemetery in Nibley.
You know, I've thought about that. There'd be a lot of flowing.
Let's figure out how to anchor them.
Just build it like they do in the wars.
Hollow road, you could find a piece of ass. At, well, up on the bench, that's sort of a profession. All those are, those are harmless corpses, by the time they put them in those lead boxes.
So. You need to make that decision. Once we have that special meeting, we tell, can we assess what our property tax rates can be? Twenty-six, we will, a public hearing, a initial talk, happy to give this presentation again, hope to. We need to hear resolution without final. And then that for the year, and staff has a chief, we'll get after it and. I've been to give Amy any time that she wanted, she'd love to. Say anything, provide any question you have for Amy. I'll give you an answer any questions you guys have about.
That was good, so I'm gonna turn it to the council now, this is a, this is before you. To consider on first reading, which means. You learn the information, you get a chance to ask questions, nice slide. Uh, you get a chance to ask for additional information that you would. Like to have before we get to the second reading. And if there are any of those from the council to discuss.
Let's do it.
And you'd also welcome to make a motion. To either adopt this on first reading or kill it. Kill them, ladies.
Bold, I'll give up.
We have a motion and a second round norm to approve for first reading, any, any discussions?
I know myself a couple uh maybe thoughts. Um, we're trying to get uh. I know Tom does an amazing job and uh, you know, he just got us fifty thousand on here. I almost wondered if we had like a little bit of that cushion in there in case we need to. Have somebody else to, if there's projects that you're. Um, can't get to or overwhelmed, or we can chase a grant to do those. Then also just like for professional fees, if we need to outsource something. And then maybe too, where we have a bunch of commercial properties coming in, maybe if we get a project, maybe we get some commercial. Consultant also can help us navigate and, and clear those up. I don't know what that number would be. I know we had, we put, one time we put in for a grant writer that we, I don't know if he used much or sold her. And that's always, we had something there just in case uh. Something comes up like another firefly, we gotta build something really quick that we have some fun that we could probably just spark it out.
Yeah, I. At the presentation, I'll get to share, we do have money budgeted throughout the budget, we'll. Seven or eight different places, planning, water, sewer, streets, each have their own little bucket. In the past, that's been sufficient, but we can, I can show you all of those, and we can get to on depending on whether or not those are sufficient, I'm pretty sure.
Good.
The after, gonna give you, but I'm happy to go with that.
Just to want to give her that.
They did, and then I know we talked to the, the, the impact fees from the school coming in, there might be some, you mentioned, and put them on or not, the two hundred fifty thousand. If we knew that we're there, I don't know if that's.
So we did get that check, they paid.
Okay.
It's done, it's already in your budget, it's in your, it's in your.
Okay.
So those impact fees for streets specifically go towards twelve west. Apologize, I don't remember, can't, projects that are listed. And, but that we, we have that money.
Okay.
I think these are engineering and review and impact fees that we asked of the school district according to our fee schedule. I'm trying to figure out why twelfth west was in there, is that safe routes to school?
It's, it's based on the study.
There's, there's two plans that work hand in hand, sorry, I can't remember the names, I apologize, both of them, but that's what you base your impact fee on, and you have to have a very specific list of what those things are at least. So. It's certainly fine to be out here, I guess, I can't. I know for sure twelve west. And hand twelve west included in the impact fee calculations.
Despite the amazing amount of grant matching we got there. We did have an eight percent match.
Well, and that, that will come quite a bit of that, it's probably a three of those.
But really that. I think your answer goes back to what the original road impact fee. Study did to justify the impact fee.
Yeah, exactly, we need to show. That money, I mean, it's got.
Good. I don't know, maybe we need to send school district, thank you, though, I, I mean, we discussed that briefly here, I invited you to tell me if you. I'm just following, we had a. Went through. Any other thoughts on the first reading of this?
Um, in terms of those two stupid softwares. Uh, I think I, I personally just leaning toward the idea of taking them out of the budget for now, and then. If it will be here, that presentation, you know. Each real for the budget.
Okay. That's fair.
It's the way to be accurate.
Yeah, or if you want to, just because we are represented and you can make a motion.
You can do it now, or you can do it at second reading, you know, typically we do amendments at second reading, but that's.
Yeah, but if you give it to me now, I can go and amend it, show you what difference the numbers are. So I personally, I would prefer, if, if there's things like that you want done, let's just make a motion, make it happen. Maybe I need to make sure we track all that, so as these changes happen, we're far enough in the process, we gotta keep a good list, so motion would be nice.
To manage the budget, take out. The app management software costs and the code enforcement software. I probably also. And lower the election expense as suggested.
So the code enforcement's already noted there.
Okay.
Right, sorry, that's. Right, sorry, that's, that's. There's a motion. Second, second for more, that would be to remove the asset management software expense and the elections expense. Or because we don't have. Discussion on that. I think it's a good motion that, um, I. I think it's what we're trying to do, be more accurate, be not, not have a hidden savings account, which works great at home, but. Maybe not the quickest from, from city, is it called goats? I just underestimate income and overestimate expenses at the end of the year. We have more than we thought we had. Um, I'm not, I, I, and I just ask, you're still willing to consider the asset management software, you just have to do it. And I think that when we get to that, Justin, maybe the folks that write the software can help you. How much money are we gonna save by buying their software? Where's the payoff? Where's the break even?
Yeah, it's a long term point.
Yep. Discussion on the motion to amend. Seeing none, those in favor of that amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. So now we have an amended motion. To adopt this first reading. In the opposition to voting, Eric, do you have more?
I'm sure of the wish list that we have there. Um, I know there was two departments that had suggested that they could really benefit from the additional employee, uh, streets. Within a town preparation. Um, I'm wondering if you think either of those are a dire enough needs that we need to. Consider that seriously for this year.
Steve and I, Chad, have talked quite a bit about it, Steve and I are of the opinion. That it's not quite dire up yet to pull a trigger for the true sport. Chad and I had in the last discussion, um, so I would maybe yield to Chad a little bit on that necessity. From. Chad, Chad, take anything you can give, anytime.
Not for today, just to memorize how that would benefit the, the community, but we can share that later.
Yeah, I could have Sam and Chad, we could focus on that and kinda bring that back, just specific discussion.
Yeah, I just would like to see our departments be able to work as well as they can, so. And since that's been suggested that there's need there, actually discuss that.
Not sure how to say this, um, so I'll just say it without certainly. Showing any lack of sincere appreciation for the staff that we have in Nibley. It's, we have a fantastic group of people, they're dedicated to the jobs, they're customer sentry. And they do really, really good work. When I think about a six percent year on year. Kind of increase in salaries, that's more than what I saw in private practice. And maybe I just need to be educated on, um. You know, what it, what it, what it, I, I wanna keep these employees, there's no doubt about that, we went through the whole salary review thing and so on and so forth, was this. Was a, was a. Is there, with, with, uh, salary review stuff and was there an expectation of? Three percent merit raises every year that got baked into that?
No, so if, if you remember, his golden handcuffs is what he called it. A lot of discussion amongst his staff, it was to, once you analyze the position. Position in and of the person.
Yeah.
You analyze the position, what value that position is, you have a, a lower limit and an upper limit. And his methodology was to get to fifty-five percent of that range in five years. Once you have that person for five years, then they build up to about fifty-five percent into the middle range, they're kinda like, hey, well enough, but they're not going. Happy enough, they're not, places, that was his balance, was trying to get everybody to fifty-five percent now. Some of them were really close to that fifty-five percent. But they weren't there, so they didn't get an adjustment when we did that. And this, so this, this kind of resets maybe. Maybe bumped some of those that didn't get that, and really what we're trying to do is get to about fifty-five. Maybe even, we're just, each employee is analyzed and looked at, I have a spreadsheet I can show you. With a projection of if they were to get up to fifty-five percent in the, thereafter. It's actually one percent raised, you know, to get to, so that in a thirty-year career. You're getting to the top of that range. Now, we've had a lot of discussion among staff, whether that's a good thing, that thing, try to prove what it is. In the end, we. Came back to following the recommendation and yeah, it's all working, so, so part of.
So my concern of is six percent year on year or a number of years sustainable. It's like, you probably agree it's not.
Right, that's why we did a quick look, cause if you're. This year, that number was much bigger than six percent.
Yeah, so, but we still have some catching up to do to get people to the middle.
Yeah, that's.
Of this value range.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, get people into that sweet spot.
Yeah.
So that they're got golden handcuffs on. So this term wants to kinda get in there, once you get to there.
Golden handcuffs means they can't afford to leave, don't, I want them not to leave because it's a great group of people to work with and such a great bunch of. Uh, citizens and what a great job the city council does, I don't want them to think about it, they're compensating. But still, it's easy to hang them. Okay, I'm good with that, um, and also I, again, this is no lack of just sincere appreciation for. Nibley City staff and what we have going here, it's exactly the opposite. Even though it doesn't sound that way, and so I'll finish it by saying, by the way. Um, I think there should be outliers that reach the top of the range, the really good people. You know, I don't wanna have medium, median or average employees in this town. So when we can justify, uh. Paying an outlying salary for outlying performance, then that's corporate.
Yeah, agree, problem is, is we have a lot of.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And, and to that, the cost of living at least, I seem to Google is two and a half percent, um. We just do three percent, just cause that's what we've done in the past.
No, uh, it's really varied in the past, it bounced from. Two, three years ago, seven to. Five, I was five, I was seven, this year really kinda came down to when I built the budget a few years ago, or two months ago. Kinda was really kinda gelled down, seemed like three was just a little bit better than what the. C D R was.
Yeah, I was, I think, second consumer price index from the, from the Bureau of Labor Statistics. Right, it's right around, so. Not sure which source.
Did that answer your question? I tried to be a little bit better.
No, I appreciate it. We just hope possible.
Yeah, and then that's when I, you know, when you compare it to what else in state, what they're doing.
Took about twelve west economy issues. Depends how the conversation goes, I was hoping to bring these old ones up to the newer standards and maybe what that cost would be, I guess we could see that how it comes, but. Yeah, I'd be one more item that I was thinking, just so that all you.
Yeah, Tom already was talking about it. But if that, and we, we present that information if anyone may have an amendment.
Is there opposition voting on first reading? Saying none, I'll ask for the vote, those in favor of adopting the. Budget estimated tonight for first reading to bring back for public hearing and second reading, please say aye. Opposed? So. By the way, with. I, I knew, new Garrett ended up with a commitment and, and, um, sorry, the case come here. You know, there's health stuff going on there, that one, you know, so anything that is adopted by the council tonight has to be. Forum of the council, not a majority, of course, please. Uh, why don't we knock out the, um. The next one, number nine, it's a compensation of elected statutory officials, one, I think that's. Should be quick, it's for first reading also, there'll be a public hearing on that and then we'll stretch our legs.
Okay. So really this is just a chart of what the annual salaries are, post salaries, the bonuses and the. Increase in salary for mayor council members and all of the department heads, including himself.
Hey, just the, they also have a motion on that, or motion and discussion tomorrow.
Any question?
Please.
Sorry, I just can't see for a, let me plug.
Can I zoom in? There, I can scroll down too, there's more. Lower.
Maybe I did, there was one earlier that like wasn't really adding up. No, I think this, no, that's my question, so on senior coordinator and HR director. Those were eighty-eight, ninety-nine. But the rest of them seem to do a three percent increase.
Yeah, that's one of those moves we talked about changing for the, the duty for sponsors.
Right, I just wonder why we did, why didn't we change that when we changed some of the other salaries?
Great question. Just changed things since then. Yeah, I guess ultimately it's, it's, it's to move, uh, that position to a salary position. That position had an annual salary, then got a lot of overtime. Or being, and so we're just gonna roll it to a salary position, all that. Not done, don't. But it's really.
Opposition to voting? Motion to approve. These increases for first reading, second, um. Nathan, thank you, discussion. Seeing none, uh, call for a vote, those in favor of approving for first reading, please say aye. Opposed? That passes. Thank you very much. All right, let's take a four-minute break, give a drink of water. Be back here at three forty-five. Basically, we stand in this.
Yeah, so go ahead, so the question, have to, have to, um, post your salary or is that? Then, if we're mentioning that, yeah, you're right, definitely, it's not as super standard, in fact, but, that's great.
Uh, Martin Stevie.
Huh?
Trying to buy a house, so they got married and said, let's buy a house.
How is that a dog?
Not too good, no. Half million dollars, so. Ridiculous, so then they pay for, as they should, they're doing due diligence, they've done due diligence on. You know, certain, like, thirty's houses. Really, they, they got it, first color paint, but they could, don't use budget. Yeah, jail seat, not sufficient for you to, sure, you know. What's your? What's your future? So, what do you, what do you want, he said, I'm not going to do that. We gotta get it. They do, so. Edward Jones potential advice. And I'm an executive. And relapse, you know, we'd save some money, skip this task. And I, I try to.
And I I try to. Living the past, I just put all that in.
I.
So back to. That was so this number ten, this is called, well, so it's, I'm just gonna. Tom, you you had some specific information that was requested of you. In terms of changes that might be coming on phase five. On this, uh both what they are and what they might cost a retrofit, is that the way you understood the request?
Basically, two phases. Questions. The disability intersection. Well, there is an exhibit in your your packet. I went out physically measured. The intersection side distance on phase three and four. I didn't, I didn't find any deficiencies. With regard to Ashto and and those guidelines there. And now, when I say that, that's not measuring from the stop, I did measure from stop and stop bar, but. I measured in accordance with the Ashso requirement, so fourteen and a half feet behind the travel. That's where the intersection side distances is. And just explain what that means, is like on a right hand turn. You're trying to accelerate and keep ahead of traffic that's oncoming, you only have to worry about one lane, there's very little to versing. When you're doing a left hand turn, that that distance that's required for the intersection side distance increases. Cause you're traveling through one lane and so it's a little further in that acceleration state. And so it just adds some distance and it's product of of speed, acceleration and time, so. On a left hand turn at thirty five miles an hour, the intersection side distance for left hand turn is three hundred and ninety feet. On a right hand turn, it's three hundred and thirty feet, thirty three hundred and thirty five feet. And there's a calculation, but everyone just uses chart, right? So those are rounded numbers. But I didn't find any deficiencies, like you say, measuring from that that travel. Question then came up on, is there any intersection side distance issues on the next phases coming in? That was a little more difficult, there's undeveloped areas. Of the of the road, there's there's a bit lacking and when I measured it from our last states. There was some trailers and some some piping in the way. But what I found was a parrot, excuse me, Nibley Park Avenue. At that intersection of twelve west. There is not the side distance needed to make a left or right hand turn from the. North side. But it it's blocked by trees, so I think it can be rectified by. Cutting the trees in a column or fashion, just raising the the prelims up. To what's required in in Ashso, it's about fourteen feet, I think our code also says, there shouldn't be any branches or anything. That that are below that fourteen foot level, so by raising that up, I will have that that. Intersection side distance at that intersection. So. To answer that question, I didn't find any deficiencies. The other question was, will we?
Let me ask on that, if I may, um having. Been out to look at this. Visited the site, of course, and I've looked at this a bunch of times, watched traffic come and go. One of the things that I believe makes that. Intersection work. To avoid, I'll define work as to avoid the right hook. And the. The right hook of vehicles that turn right into bikes and into pedestrians as they turn off of twelfth west into one of the cross streets, let's say Stone, Stone Bridge or the the road to the east. Um and and that was always one of my biggest concerns when I first saw this plan. Uh inherited this plan and I've come to like it is. The pedestrians or bikes are protected out of traffic and then in traffic in the intersections and then out of traffic in the intersections and so what the. Multiple curbs do is bring the vehicle so they're looking directly at the bikes and pedestrians. But it also means that. According to Utah code, cars should be stopping at the stop line, at the stop sign, and so. Are we deficient with partic- in particular, maybe we need to go back out and look at it. There's a white fence, a white vinyl fence. As you travel west. Would take you into Stone Bridge, but. Twelve west is running north and south, is, do you think, did you look at that white vinyl fence and if the answer is no, I mean, we can go out and look at it again. In terms of sight distances on that white vinyl fence that's in the. North. Uh east corner. I don't know, can we pull up the parcel view or any of this?
Turn to southeast.
So I actually created a, I mean, say that that's in.
Love to be looking at that.
Yeah.
It's gonna be ten point three? Is that right?
Yes. But can't really see it, but those measurements. That are on there are from the stop bar, so this is at probably twenty five hundred south, so if you scroll through to some other pages. And I included calculations because there's engineers on on council and. Just thought I'd offer that information, so this one here.
Twenty eight hundred.
Twenty eight hundred, so if you go down to twenty nine eighty. That's the next one.
Yeah.
So you're talking eastbound?
I'm I'm talking if you are, it's Nibley Parkway, right, that turns into Stone Bridge if you go straight. That's. Twenty ninety.
So this.
If you're on twenty nine eighty headed west. And you stop at the stop bar, can you see traffic? Coming from the north. With the white vinyl fence.
Or the south. Either.
So, yeah, I thought the north one was the worst, but we can talk about all of them, right?
Okay, so. With the. From this stop bar, in the current position. Now, mind you, northbound traffic. We haven't improved that section of the road yet, so when we do this next phase, everything's gonna shift to the west, all the travel lanes shift to the west. Moving the curb and everything, and so what that'll do is increase. That distance. So what I measured was at present, two hundred eighty nine doll, two hundred and eighty nine feet. From the stop bar. Once you move fourteen and a half feet away from, so you. Go through that negotiated space.
Yeah.
That distance increases and there's no violation.
We we have. It's two eighty nine?
Two eighty, two eighty nine. Two, uh so I measured it twice, once it, once at two hundred sixty one feet, and I might have missed one, but. Presently, if you stop at the stop bar, you can see two hundred sixty one feet in the travel lane at current location. Now. The two hundred eighty nine feet shifts that over to where this new traveling will be at from the stop bar to where the new travel lane will be.
Once we do the.
Once we do the improvements in phase five, yes, so that's from the stop bar, now move fourteen hun, or four. Fourteen and a half feet away from that traveling, now there's no. Distance violation. You can see a three hundred ninety five feet.
Is that the requirement, three ninety five?
Three ninety five is for a left hand turn, so I guess. You would be looking, if you're traveling west, making a left hand turn, that distance is measured to the left on the page. If you make, excuse me. Let's see, yeah, left hand turn, that distance is measured left on the page, so on a right hand turn, it's three hundred and thirty five feet, so if you're turning right, be looking. Right on the on the screen. So remember, you look left to turn right, yeah, so. That distance would, that is technically only need to be three hundred and thirty five feet there for.
Well, I appreciate that level of detail and I appreciate looking at it and I. I'm I'm gonna say that if we feel like there's some. Opaceness in that vinyl fence. That there may be opportunity to even go beyond the standard and. You know, I'll go talk to the landlord and say, look, let Nibley City help you make. Your fence not quite so tall in terms of opacity.
So that might be tricky, um the. That distance is measured at three and a half feet above. Street level, okay, then you have your curb and then any grade differential, there's two percent slope as you move toward that fence, so. That might be a two foot fence, if you wanna actually clear that down, two foot tall or move it further.
The opacity, yes, right, I'm not talking about asking the home. Instead of a two foot tall fence, I'm talking about making so we can see through it.
Great. And let's let's keep it on this this here, so I also wanna point out in this case that the measurement between the the bulbs. On the plan, it's twenty four foot six, I think I measured it out in the field, it's twenty five feet, so it's a little bit wider. If you go further south. To the intersections going into the heritage crossing, there's only twenty two feet in there, so it is much more narrow. Moving in and out of both that subdivision heritage crossing, there's there's two uh triangles there, so. There was also a question, can we move them, can we make them shorter and things, so if we move them. It's gonna encroach into that sidewalk, so we'd have to look at each one individually. To see if it's encroaching too much into that sidewalk or whatnot, but. It it is worth looking into and and on that note, there was a question, how much would it cost to remove, like, so. I called the contractor that actually installed them. You cut and. Turn these out, move them, reform. Shorter at four inches, so on phase five, we we did make the shift, we moved them just slightly so they're more in line with the uh. On the, on the, let's see, the east side, that was more in line with that that barrier wall. So we've kind of shifted them back.
How much would we shift these if we made it like phase five horizontal shift?
We could shift them. Halfway, so we'd have to move them fifty percent of their current width, so they would line up with the curb. The existing curb. So we we, I don't know, that's two or three feet or something.
Two feet.
Two feet. Yes, so to remove it would be about twelve to fifteen hundred dollars and to reinstall it is around thirty five to thirty eight hundred dollars, so. If we just use some round numbers, you're fifty five hundred to six thousand dollars per bulb. So you're looking at twenty five to thirty thousand dollars per intersection. Then you're gonna have to come back and re-strike things that imagine on certain cases and things, so. So I I believe those are the two main questions that were posed to staff, is there any questions on what's been presented? I'm just saying, it'd be about twenty five to thirty thousand dollars per intersection change.
And then. That's. Considering that and looking at those costs. Don't go to. The traffic and a traffic engineer that would evaluate the decrease in. Safety. For bikes and pedestrians, I guess I would bring it up to whatever phase five is gonna be anyway, so that's satisfactory, okay? I answered my own question.
Okay. I have another question, one of the other. Discussion point was the wall, it would all be good. For shoulder space. And that would take some serious redesign and it would be possible, but. I believe, and we had that discussion with the engineer and the engineer believes that that will. Reduce to eliminate the traffic calming. And speeds of the of the vehicles now. Some reason, we had lots of discussion about the speed limit on this road and we, in my head, we'd already. Increased the speed limit on this road to thirty five miles an hour, it is actually still posted at twenty five, it's thirty five miles south of the thirty two or south roundabout. Which is where I think I confused myself, but regardless, the eighty fifth percentile speed right now is thirty six, thirty seven miles an hour. I think an amazing test. Would be for us to raise the speed limit to thirty five and see if that number changes, that would tell us the effectiveness of that wall. And if we are truly calm.
It'll tell us the effectiveness of the totality of traffic calm.
Yeah.
You're saying if if speeds don't increase, then the wall is working.
Yeah, yeah, that's that's that'd be a great test, right? If we posted at thirty five and speeds don't go up, people are driving what's comfortable. They're not driving five miles to ten miles an hour, well higher than the speed limit, what governs how fast you're driving? The the comfort of your driving or the white sign? Yeah, well, I mean, that'd be a great test, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying one or the other, I'm saying it'd be a great test to see.
See if.
Yeah, so so we. Talked about that and we decided we didn't want to raise it at thirty five until we got phase five done. Is that's why we hadn't increased. That speed limit, so that's just a point I wanted to bring to that. Fantastic, if we could test that.
That is another variable though, because it's gonna put more traffic and different drivers on that road. I mean, this this road is gonna connect higher up to the airport, so that reduces another variable in our control experience. So maybe we check it to the thirty five, raise the speed to the final intended thirty five. Just enough time to collect the statistics before phase five opens. And then we have it. And then we have another, what's, what is it after phase five opens and the road's complete? Why not? It's just in science.
Yeah, we'll do whatever you want. I'm just. We will be starting construction soon, we're trying to finalize that. They're supposed to be started now, but they're having some issues with subcontractors, so. We're hoping in the next two weeks. So. I don't know how accurate the speed data would be if we have destruction going on. So, yeah, we we can.
Cause phase five is not just the final link, it's also work to sell the stone bridge.
So Justin mentioned we could be collect a speed day, we've done it twice, once fairly new after it was installed, just to see what what was happening, I think it was a month later. We did another one within the last month or so. And it relatively hasn't changed, but I think there was a few more cars, people getting used to travel that way. Um Levi told me a story that you he presented this project to some planners at breakfast, I didn't know you guys had breakfast all again. That's scary. But um wait, there are.
Yeah.
But there there are, there was conversation, it's like, we can't wait to go. I'm gonna use this to get to know what we're looking for. So. I think opening it up will see a much different picture than what we're seeing.
Yeah, the traffic council obviously gets to go up. This is a. Arterial road, that's why the CNPL.
And and I recall, this is a few years ago where. Came we were somewhere down south in Salt Lake area, maybe Davis County, but. They actually paint, so we we created chicanes or artificial curvature in the road using these barriers. They tried it with paint down in Salt Lake and I remember the news stories, it's like they they had a helicopter and people were just going straight. Right through all the painted lines rather than following the paint, so. I don't know how effective it would be, like Justin said, by moving that that wall, but we can try it. Whatever speed necessary.
I'm talking to you, so I'll let you all, go ahead, just.
Just one more for me, uh does anybody have the opportunity to go travel fifth north in Logan? So so they have. Implemented this kind of situation now, they. I apologize, I don't know numbers off the top of my head, but uh they did, I did just get from them their costs. To put that in and what that was is really basically a race curb with those white plastic candlesticks on top. Looks a lot better, I feel like. Unsure of the effectiveness, I would think it would be similarly effective, but maybe not quite as effective. I think their road is posted, what's that posted?
Twenty five.
Five.
It's a different context, dude, it's resident, it's very.
So it is. Definitely go look at that when we have a few minutes to take a look at what they've done. We may try to, you know, we can. Learn what we can from a lot.
Say it again to the mic.
There's way less parking open.
So at the uh, at the planners associate me. I had the opportunity to go on a bus tour and I presented on a couple of of alternative transportation projects, one was Center Street, the other was twelve lines. But when we were in the bus driving past this five hundred north. It was cars traveling in that bike lane on the other side of the curve, I don't know, they're probably just still adjusting, but.
Put it, they put in do not enter signs on those, yeah. There wasn't any paint at the time either. There wasn't any paint at the time either.
I appreciate you bringing this through, I know a lot of us councils had the. Comments from those people that live there, so I know for myself, all we put back what we had here, that's what we asked to do with finding stuff. Just show them some of your. It's here, but. The only thing, like on the side of plan, I I went with one and they did have that Stonebridge sign that's kind of there too, you have the fence and then you have the sign that's bumped out a little bit more, so. Look at them. See how the signs affect, but and then. Also, the the trees are are good now, but I'm sure we'll keep an eye on, make sure that their. Their branches are tall enough to keep as much as a little bit, yeah.
Are any of the. Visibility. Concerns. Part of the result of. Us letting people off the hook on that right of way on Oak West.
What do you mean?
Great question.
I'm really good at picking scabs or. Learning from experience.
All right, what do you mean?
So we as a council. We have a right of way, we let people encroach on that right of way and we. Let it become perfect.
Well, we have, we had right away, to clarify a little bit, we had right away and then we had easement.
Right.
It was like a landscape easement.
Yeah.
That was not supposed to have fences or things in it, and just time went on and time went on, we didn't do a good job of enforcing that. Some people encroached on it and it was less than a year ago, we just said, oh, I guess we're, that's gone and we abandoned it.
That'd be.
So no good deed goes on punishment.
Yeah, it's all on his preference. Photos and thoughts that lesson down. Thinking that I've. Made a comment of anything today.
No.
But it's got photos of some places we've found. Think. Thank everyone here. Regardless, say after that, uh, the. Yeah, I'll just reference that. What did you say in medieval, remind us? I just went to pictures. Uh, what a, what a view from my vehicle. Stop like. involve all expressions. Oh, I'm. Uh, yeah, and I just kind of made. You and then uh city staff was really great about working with me and basically. Answer some of the same questions that. Tom was now presented and started, so.
Since you referred to the document, does that show where the right of way line is, so we can just say, hey, these are actually not in the right place?
So. The RW is a small R slash W, kind of a darker line.
Okay.
That's the right of ways.
I I think it was a ten foot. If I remember right, landscape east.
Ten foot east, man, ah.
Yeah, so it should be ten feet behind behind that even.
Or a chunk, and I just want to clarify, that's just for us, uh, small section of this road, not 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 the whole thing, it's just the north end. North end on one side of the road. I can. Can I get that, yeah? I, is it, has it gone in recently? So not not too long ago, okay? I can check, um. I, the reason I ask is, I think it was twenty eighteen is when we started requiring fence permits, so if it came in before that, then. Twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen sometime over that, but I can check it. Yeah. There's, there's a good chance it does, I I think, I think it's worth. This is a bigger discussion, but just since it's brought up with all the fences, I think it's worth looking at our fence standards again and. So we 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 allow fences outside of the. The or six foot tall fences, that is, outside of the forty foot. Uh. Clearview triangle, I'm not sure if that's. Quite adequate. Uh. I I I just permitted a fence, uh. In a new subdivision that their backyard backs onto thirty two hundred south. It's six feet and it doesn't, it's like, it looks like a visibility problem, it it meets that forty foot. Clearview triangle. So it might be worth looking at that again.
While we're doing it, let's look at. Where the. Right angle. Of triangle is.
Yeah.
Is that. At right of way? Because. We do things like put. Sidewalks in the right of way and we put bike paths in the right of way. Or is that from vehicle, like at vehicle way, understand? And. You know, this intersection. Needs. People to stop at the stop line. As state code requires.
It's at the roadway, so it doesn't count the park strip and the sidewalk, that's the way it's written, so. So that's why it's almost all of these fences are allowed, because when you take into account the park strip and the. The sidewalk and the curvature of the road and everything, you come out. Uh, there's not very many where that's even a factor.
There's not very many, I agree. But we're not protecting pedestrians.
So that doesn't, yeah, that doesn't mean it's it's right, I'm just saying, there's not very many that are. Against the city code.
But we're not protecting pedestrians.
Right. Yeah, there's some visibility issues for sure with those fences.
So I saw Lehigh version of Oak West quotes. I'm part of. Fogging channel. That they work the fogging stand and. Baseball complex. And there were a couple of differences noted, and they had, instead of. Going with the dirty barrier to separate vehicle traffic from bicycle traffic. They had candlesticks. So I'm talking about white, except you guys know what I mean by that, I didn't know what to call them, but that. Firmly described it. And that wasn't too bad. But they also didn't have mountable curbs. They had paint to. Show where the, where we would, where we put a mountable curb and then they had. Candlesticks. On the edge. Of that mountable curb and. Frankly, I did not like it at all because I was just confused by the candlesticks, there's, it was like a forest of candlesticks poking up. And I. You know, I would. I'm not sure I want to drive my car over those candlesticks, I've driven my car, like you trip it over the mountable curves. And I didn't have to bring a TV to get fixed, by the way.
He fixes.
No, I didn't have to get it fixed.
Were those candlesticks hired?
They are about four feet tall. Yeah. About what a candlestick is.
They they have inner sizes thirty two, thirty six and forty, that is about four feet.
Yeah.
But they. They didn't, well, they didn't delineate the curve. Where they're trying, you know, where the intent is to. Square up. Vehicle traffic with bike and pedestrian.
Right.
And. It was confusing to me, but. I know our solution is confusing. This, you know, to some extent as well.
Yeah, I like a great avenue. As another example that I'm. Thank you, they, what they've done is they've. Put like a strip essentially between. Well, they kind of switches so she can down that road, but. One thing that I sent for workshop in this, uh. I thought a lot about in preparation for this meeting once. Initially, the proposal for the resolution was to, year after the entire present, we just face five opened. We adjusted that if I was going to motion in the meeting to just say it's having opens. Uh, so that would put us on a time in this October.
Uh, it was for a year from when we passed the solution.
Oh, that's right, yes, that's the old ones. I think that's something that the council should consider, um. That's still a timeline. Or. Potentially not forcing our hand, but kind of going to a conclusion. Or I think it's just a timeline when we have a next workshop, there's nothing strict, you know, sort of making changes. That are minor. Or having more of these workshops, it encourages that in ordinance of the resolution, but uh. I think it's something to consider, um, I think that the opening and action as has been stated tonight. Is going to give that a very different. Traffic. Feel that we've had so far, so. I don't have suggestions, but I just think it's something to continue to think about.
And and. You know, the resolution to me. Was. In October. We're committed to seeing how this goes for a year. And have workshops and have opportunities for public input. But. That's my marching orders to put this back on the agenda in October of this year, now if the council wants to. Abandon that resolution and put it on the calendar sooner, later or in between, I mean, I will put it on for October and if the council. Tells me. We want to abandon that resolution and replace it with a different one. You know, that's all up to the council.
Well, I I think this is good, I think we just try to take the input from our, the people that are talking to us and show them we're listening and then try to. We we know it's not perfect, but we know it's it's working to some degree, we just want. Cause Lom said, well, we should tear it out, this is, tear it out when they get hurt, I mean, the holes in there. Yeah, that's, I'll do, I'll give this back and show them the the new design and this. We should one is in October. And and let's tell me different.
Well, so, I mean, and back to Nathan's point. With modifying the ones at twenty ninety eight and twelve West. With modifying it to move them and shorten them, be considered a minor modification or a major modification? Something we ought to try and do before October or.
I I guarantee council can't spend twenty five thou- thousand dollar section of that, I mean.
Yeah. Yes.
That's that, the minor modification was to allow staff to make minor modifications without coming back to council.
Okay, I understand.
That's not a minor modification.
Should not be considered major.
Yeah, you're gonna have to pay for it.
Yeah. I just wanted, wanted to make sure, clear what our definition were. Minor or major modifications.
Yeah, I think that question came up before and I said, for all the discussion here, I'm pretty sure staff is not gonna go out. On a limb and then take the saw and cut it off at the edge of the tree, they'll come back to you for. The decision. But if I was you. Okay, so there's no votes tonight, uh, I don't need gender for votes, uh. Anything else to add anywhere, staff, council? Okay. Thanks for that, thanks for talking to our residents, thanks for. Staying in touch and uh. We'll uh. We'll keep looking at it. Okay, thanks. Okay, next we have a discussion consideration, this is ordinance twenty five twelve, this is a rezone of partial. A parcel. Uh, at fifteen hundred west and twenty six hundred south from R two. To a commercial, so this is on our agenda because. It's been on the agenda for a while and council asked, made a motion, uh, by motion and by vote. Asked for us to come back to tonight's agenda. Uh, is there any new information from staff?
Yeah, I just wanted to report on uh, that it was asked about the potential tax implications of a re- the rezone. And uh, our staff reached out to Cache County Assessor's Office and they. They just stated that there's, there's no tax implications. Associated with the rezone if if the land stays in Greenbelt, um. In in a lot of cases, commercial land is valued higher, but if it stays in Greenbelt, then then there aren't those tax implications. Uh. So that's the only new information. We, we did just want to restate that the the planning commission and staff's recommendation was to approve this ordinance. Which would rezone this property from R two to commercial, uh, this is consistent with. With the city's uh, future land use map and and the mass master plan. And would be in line and in support of the general plan.
Uh, Alice.
Yeah, Joel's online too. Joe, just so you know, Joel Nelson is also online.
Um, a few things. Um. There is a. We've, we've lost the developer. It's gone, we. Visit that. It hasn't developed, so there's no, there's no plan, there is nothing there any longer. So I went back with more. Some of the information that was related to me. Um, I have not talked to the developer that. The comment that was sent back to me. From a broker was he just said the city's not ready for a development. But when things. Last year we talked about, and I don't profess to be an expert on this. You know, we need to talk about three or four. So with words attacking, but fighting, seeing some of the the stipulations of what I hear. To go back. One means we had about three months ago talked about the stipulation on residential commercial, and so one of the comments came back from staff. Last news, we need all the commercial we can get. Um. And you know, we. The comment that came back to me was how many commercial developments have been developed and. Staff, do we understand all the inner workings of all these should we go on? I don't know the answer to that. But there's a question that came up in there, so you went back and. What says something? In Utah. Municipalities that adopted TIF districts. You generate at least a hundred thousand dollars in revenue through the district was to allocate at least twenty percent of the funds for affordable housing development starts in retention. Twenty percent. So I'm trying to get an answer on that, is that what the issue, but I know it was discussed because we've discussed it. You know, a few times on that. The the issues of the TIF reimbursement will be dependent on what there is actually part of. So we went back and looked at, we have fifty five acres left. In there and what the proposal that the staff was to put forward. Is that we would leave ourselves with twenty six percent residential. And if there's fifty six percent of this, which. You at least have thirty acres of commercial, which you put about, and it's actually almost sixty percent of that remaining properties. So I tried to go back and get an answer. On this, I don't have all the answers on it yet. Because I'm not a field specialist. But the issue in here was. If the developer goes in and use uses TIF on the case they reimburse, but he doesn't get that twenty percent. Or exceeds that threshold, he doesn't get reimbursed for that money. You know, they face an honor or something like that. So I think the issue in here. So I think the issue in here is there is no plan here, and just to say let's go out and throw something commercial. Instead of putting the cart before the horse, when we're talking about the tip finance. The concern here, and I I'd like to get more information on it. I don't have it. They haven't responded back to me, but. If twenty percent of funds, you go you go through that whole district. There is a minority for residential. It's basically our bees. And so the issue in there is if we have twenty percent of funds for affordable housing. You know, there's only so much you can put into roads and things like that. We're not gonna make up the cost. I mean, I mean, basically it puts a ceiling on what tip funds can be for the commercial development. That's the problem. And so when they come back, we say, well, it's number of apples and tip on sets really enough. In my will house, because that's more between you and the commercial developer. But if he's looking at those numbers saying, well. I have to spend X number of dollars, and I'm gonna be X minus Y, Z, X, you know, all these other numbers. I can't make that up. That doesn't work for me, so I think.
Let me let me save you some trouble here, okay? Can I jump in? Because we went through this extensively when the Malou C R A documents were adopted, and it's who is it? Lewis Roberts Young?
Jason Burning.
Jason Burningham. Should talk to him. Was formed and in place before the twenty percent for affordable housing requirement was enacted by the legislature. So we're we're talking about apples and worms here. If you're looking at current code, that's not the code to look at.
Yeah, the documents are. Before the twenty. And so I went back and looked at. So I don't know what this is, and like I said, we need to look at this. But the issue here is to say, well, we gotta get commercial, 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 and we don't even know what's gonna go in there or anything like that. I wish for like the. Before it is, the plan that this was based on. He's left. He's on.
You submitted the application, correct?
Back to January. We have ninety days and gave us ninety days. And so to go back and say, well, you can change this over to commercial limits our ability going forward, what we can do. So that's the concern there. You can do whatever. Decisions based on. But the concern we have is the the city's making decisions for us, and we have to step away and say, what's what are we really doing here? Okay, we work together, have a partnership. And remember, when we first annexed in Midway City, the council was great. It says, we can work on this. When we do things, we do some great things. And now we're being told. From the staff that, hey. We want it this way, and there's no collaboration. There's no discussion. And several issues are going on, and I'm trying to get in. But we'd like your collaboration. We would not like. I mean, how would you feel if you were us? And have me tell you what you're gonna do.
Wanted it commercial, first place? Didn't you submit the application to make it commercial? That's what I'm confused about.
Yeah, I'm changing. Yeah, because when they submitted the plan. This is we'd like to hurry and get this into commercial.
But but because you changed your mind now, we're just supposed to make that.
It wasn't me, it was the developer.
Because the group that you're working with has changed their mind. Now we're not supposed to change to commercial?
Well, there's no purpose for us because we don't kind of be planning doing it.
Makes. So this is very simple question. Does the proponent still want commercial? That's the first question. The uh. Other part of that question, it was that we didn't know. We thought it was maybe because of tax implications, but it sounds like the proponent is more concerned about. Just what the zoning is, because they. I think that it's important for the phone to answer the question, do you want it to be commercial? And to explain why the allocation, uh other than the developer doesn't have a plan anymore. Because there's still benefit to entitling the property. From what it currently is zoned. And if the proponent is not interested in those two things, just like this, it's a simple yes for them.
So there's two parts to that. Is there a tactic implication? Not right, but there can be for us going forward. It can impact our ability and we are changing everything of this. Because what goes on here makes them is. People think this is a one dimensional negotiation. You go and say, okay, we got this, and it's that. It's not that way. We deal with commercial negotiations. And I mean, my family comes up. From maybe first multilevel commercial development, and they say it's never one. There's multiple issues to go on that. Before you shape, no, the concerns we have was it creates that right break from where there's a property you negotiate. An impossibility. That's the concern. So. You're right. Is there no tax inclusion? Possibly for right now, but can there be? Sure, it can be.
So what appears is you do not want it to be commercial anymore, but you'd like to withdraw the application you already paid for.
Well, I think the the issue we'd like to do is withdraw and see what plans we can put together because. Excuse me. But what we can do with it, what opportunities we have, and then to have candidates say this is what we have, but just to say, well, we got this is commercial. You know?
So so on our future land use map, I mean. This is an area that we are okay with being commercial, and so it's one that we as a city. The residents of wouldn't mind it being commercial. You applied, and if you no longer want it, I just need you to say we don't want to be commercial. Because what happens then is that you're gonna have to reapply if you're still the property.
Sure.
So I just want to know if that's what you want.
Just withdraw for the time being and come back and sit down. With people who come through and, you know, things we have, we may be sitting out, council say this is what we have, but right now we're planning. I mean, the plan is on. So. So I mean, this, what would you be making in our spot?
I I don't have a plan. I don't have. I I don't know what's going on. I my my job here is to decide whether. It's commercial because you asked for it, and so I'm just asking you to. It seems like there's changes and you maybe not want it anymore. But I haven't figured why. That there's no plan is okay. I'm fine with that.
Okay, let me let me give you straight. So when you negotiate, they come up this, when you negotiate, who's gonna be the commercial developer here?
You mean, like, which of us have done that?
Yeah, something.
Okay, Norma.
No, no, guys. So probably issues in there when you go negotiate, there's several different points you have to negotiate on. And try to get them to take care of it. It's not like moving some of the house or buying a house. There's several issues in there that you have to deal with. System things like that. I mean, there's several points in there that you negotiate, and you put yourself into a bad situation if you don't be careful with. So there are a lot of concerns that are on our part that we have to be careful going forward. Now, you use a captain, you can do whatever you want. But for us, I mean, we appreciate it. Say, hey, well, you know. They changed and we picked. Five years ago, when I said things will change, and we just have to work with those things and change. It's not because of me. You know, you have developers, you know, come in with a plan, they go. You know, things change. This will be the biggest issue is how many you going forward? Well, we have to work together if we're gonna get this work. And obviously, it wasn't you or me that changed this thing, but they left. So the question goes, why are we doing forward now? So with that, I mean, it changed. We don't, you know, they told us to give it. Like the changes to commercial back in January. We tried to bring it, get things taken care of. We didn't need to retire for eight.
Now, let's let's be clear on two points. So this council knows that commercial developer. This city worked with that commercial developer. That commercial developer presented us a concept plan. That commercial developer modified the com- the concept plan to align to our master road plan. Ended up with what he said in session, a better plan. We approved that concept plan. And I I won't speculate, even after having spoken at length with that commercial developer, exactly what did happen. But I think what's on the record is we worked really well with that guy. And he's not hearing. So let me understand why it's a liability to you. To have the land entitled to commercial development. If you want to do commercial development there to match with the rest of the property. When we asked you that question, when you were here last time, you said it was because you didn't want to pay the eight to ten thousand dollars. Of back stream belt taxes. Now. The assessor has answered that question. Apparently not only for us, but also for you, because she included in her email. Gee, the landlord just asked me that same question, which was after our last meeting.
And then the assessor called me on it. And she says, when we were talking about this property, I'm like. I think we're the property owners, so. Um that is true. She called me because we were talking about several other things, or it wasn't just this issue. But she brought it up and said, yeah, that's that's true. It depends on what you do afterwards. But the issue in here, one of the issues we go with these negotiations. There are several points. Yes, is it zoned for whatever the purpose? Is that definitely gonna be commercial? Well, we think so, but do we guarantee it?
If it's zoned for a commercial, we can say yes. Otherwise, it's a maybe. I have a commercial development and and the commercial development is, I would. To development. Is that zoned for commercial if we follow through with the rezone? The answer is yes.
The answer is no, but there are some principles of my understanding that I'm trying to get your insight on. From my understanding, anytime I own property that's agricultural or maybe an R two like this one is, which is. Not a whole lot of value square acreage. And I entitle it to something like a mixed zone or a commercial industrial. Whether I build it, whether I sell it to someone else, I've done the hard work. Which is what you've done. You've put in all this work. You've made the application. You've paid for the application to get it entitled. So now the value generally increases. No matter what, because now the next person or whoever comes after or wants to do something with it. Doesn't have to do all that work. It's already done. So what I'm trying to find out is, do you want this property entitled? My point here is I just want it to stay R two. As a city. So if there's another zone you'd like, we can talk about it, but like, I just need to know if you want it entitled.
And the main concern is I don't want to get down the road to the negotiations. So if you feel like you need to go ahead and do commercial due, our preference is is the holdoff. If not, we'll wait for the council. Your back. And you have different challenges with this. I hate it. I mean, it's sort of a whole theme in the notion and.
Tell me what holdoff means. Does that mean that? If and when you decide it should not be R two, that you would submit. A different and new rezone application?
Well, we would do that, and you know, with a new plat, sure.
No plats. We don't. Plats are not part of the rezone application.
But we wanted something solid and be. I would like.
Like, is that what hold is that what holdoff means? Define we would like to hold off.
If you want to deny, continue.
That's that was our discussion last. Continued, 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 continued.
It's the best thing for you guys.
I feel for you. Uh the best thing for me is I want to do the property, but it feels like you're not really sure, right? And I wanna thought, I wanna follow our master plans and our general plans. And I feel like. You asked me if it would be, what would I do if it were me and I owned it, and I felt like I was kind of beat up over this, and I was done with it. I would entitle this property and I'd start to try to sell it to someone else. So. Right? So that that's that's what I would do. So I'm trying to understand. It seems like you have a different idea of our plan. Uh and I want to do. The best I can of what you'd like to do, but it's.
Maybe you make success, you may. It's a title that. Oh. I I mean, it's just. We thought we did your months. We thought we did twice. Didn't have. It's just frustrating because you end up just getting sold. And you know, it's 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 a challenge.
How how's the zoning that you currently have? Impacted you negatively? That would help me understand why not to zone this one.
Well, what what your biggest concern is coming down the road. If you have some other opportunity that you can go in there and do it, are you gonna put yourself into a worse situation like like we have done with you?
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
So what's the contract? You don't have to tell me this. If you're talking to a commercial developer. And you're under contract with the commercial developer. Was there a contingency to have the land get rezoned to commercial before the sale would take place? Or was the commercial developer willing to buy this while it was still R two?
There was stipulation on both sides, so. If if very according to what happened. It was a lot of this, so.
So if we make a motion to deny, then he can just reapply. I'm making a motion to deny for this twenty five.
You have a motion?
And then it.
It's either a second or no second. Yes. You want to talk about it second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny the uh application for rezone. R two to commercial.
Okay, so by denying that it's just gonna stay as it is, it's R two, and if if one wants to change, they'll have to. Submit a new application, correct?
And without a unanimous vote, that motion will fail. And without a unanimous vote to grant the rezone, that motion. Which means it'll still be on a future agenda.
I would be excused if I was sitting three hours.
Yeah, I don't blame you for that. I mean, no, I. Yeah, that's.
Sorry.
I mean, this was. Me personally, I would want some commercial. That yeah, that do to do with the seller, and then future plan, and that's what it's gonna be sold as as commercial. You're the one that presented this. You're the one that's requesting this, that's why. That's why I I just deny that, but he won't. We've we've talked about this for a long time. It all felt like an alarm or this just puts us back, but. Because you can't you can't build anything on well, or to.
No, it's not allowed. It's not allowed in for you.
I I think. I want to help, and I feel be like, I feel like I can help right now to. For the reason, I think it gives guidance. I think it gives lanes to stay in if there's a different zone that they're interested in. That is currently on our books. I'm willing to entertain that too, but this property is not gonna stay R two, so why keep or can't? Let's. But it doesn't give you guidance.
Well, come, and as we have with the developer that you. And as we have with the developer that you come to now.
I would love that.
You need to go through the. Fossils are just. They're odd. It's hard and it's not easy. I wish it was a grocery store there.
Ready to vote? Did you say yes?
No, I said we're voting on the motion.
I'll say R two to A in that case. So cities have the authority, the legislative authority to zone land. It's not a question of do we have the authority. So is that a yes, you're ready to vote? Okay, is there an objection to vote? Okay, let's, uh, call the roll, please. The motion is. To deny the rezone from R two A two commercial.
Counselor motion. Opposed.
So the motion fails to achieve the quorum of the council. We'll talk about it again. Next item. Is there a new motion?
If it dies, can you have a new motion?
I think that, I think that if we, if a motion fail, yes, you can make a new motion. You can make a new motion if, if the motion fails for lack of, of a council call.
So is, is just a new motion out of that decision?
A new motion, as long as we're still on this thing. But I don't know.
Votes would say to continue with the word.
And if there's no new, if there's no other motion on this agenda item, it just comes back. Oh, it fails, so that means it.
Which is no decision?
The decision that's been made is no decision.
So the motion to deny. Fail, so. That can go away or a new motion can be made. Cause that, that motion failed, so a new motion can be made on the same line.
That's correct. I'm just wondering how protective that is.
Can, can I just throw an idea? That was made and I have not thought this through, not. Would it be acceptable to the council and opponent to rezone it back to Ag? Because that would ensure you that they're not going to come build a couple houses on it. And still leaves the option open to not look, tie him into the commercial restrictions. Just throwing it out there, you guys think about it.
Well, add zones are often holding zones.
It's just thought.
Well, I guess that's not true.
Al, you wanna? Property there? That help you negotiate with a commercial developer?
I just wanna leave the thing alone where I can. I need your. I mean, it's just, I wish the rain. And I apologize. I dress. I apologize. Nathan, Aaron. I apologize. I mean, this has been. It's been hard. I hate it. And I just wish I had, you know, some support, you know, to say. Let's work together and collaborate, put ideas together. But it hasn't happened to me. It's just, you know. Everyone says, well, you're too nice, you listen to me. Well, is that a good thing or a bad thing? I like to hear ideas. I like to hear your ideas. I also like people to be honest with me, tell me. Some challenges, okay, so, anyway, I mean, I appreciate it, I do, and I don't need to take a good time, cause you got things. Well, I see what you're listing, man.
I'm gonna move on to the next agenda item unless somebody does.
I'll make a substitute. I'll make a motion to continue.
You have a motion?
Doesn't make you see regardless?
Oh, oh, that's not the motion. Continue, motion to continue, it's not a feature.
Wait, so are you putting a date on your?
So continue can tell our next meeting is the motion. One once. Twice. Motion dies for life.
Can I make a different motion?
Sure, let's do crime.
Make a motion to rezone the parcel to Ag instead of R two.
So the motion, sorry, a second. I'll repeat it. The motion is to rezone from R two to Ag. Which is appropriate. We've done all the public hearings. We've done all the stuff. Once it's on the agenda. Even if we've published and publicized, it's from R two to commercial. The council can in the same meeting say R two to Ag or R two to industrial or two to whatever they want. So the motion is to rezone from R two to Ag.
All six seconds, we didn't just discuss this.
We can now talk about.
Yeah, so I think after hearing what the opponent has to say tonight. Should go with the original application or the recent stated. The city has, in my opinion, do our. Matt, all that has, has no interest in this being too. So as Mayor Chen said. It is great idea, but Justin, if we put this in Ag, it's a holding spot. Decide what they wanna do since.
How many acres? This is Carson. Uh, change the minimum by eight or eggs.
That's my, I think it's a good idea to. Not keep it on the agenda.
Yeah, I don't want it to time about this getting in three weeks.
But if, if the property would want to.
If he does, apply before three weeks in time.
But I think it's good.
You okay with the Al, those are.
I mean, yes, yes.
Hey, Al, uh, this, this Joel.
Go ahead, Joel.
Is this something you and I, we need to decide, discuss before? We, I mean, I had no idea going to add was even gonna be mentioned. Um, and I'm not sure if we want to commit tonight. I just don't know enough to know the pros or cons by, by that proposal.
Um, you don't have to answer Joel's question for all of us. You can get on your phone and talk to him if you'd like. We can go for a recess or something. I mean, Joel asked you a question, not for. Alright, we're gonna recess until. Ten oh five.
Give me a call, Al.
Spot so.
Right with this yeah.
But anyway, I I'm surprised, but thank you.
Okay, so we're back in session. Motion for the council is to resolve this parcel from R two to agricultural. Discussion. Uh, senior discussion, shall we call the roll, please? In favor. In favor. Motion passes with a required vote of three votes, so. We'll see when you want to do something with it. Think so.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is to another rezone. This is item twelve parcels as listed. This would be to go from. Uh, this is requested by the proponents to go from commercial to industrial.
Thanks, uh, mayor and council.
Joel, thanks for tuning in and helping us out.
Thank you.
Go ahead, leave right.
Alright, uh, so this this uh, reason application was it was a joint application with two property owners. That that represent uh, three different properties. Uh, just just to orient you, this is um. Kind of on the on the top of the screen, that's Nibley Park Avenue. And um, Heritage Drive is to to the left of the screen, so. It's uh, Mount Mountain View Machine and Welding and Mount Mount Majestic Sage um. I I know I misstated that, I'm sorry, it's late. I butchered it, I'm sorry, um. Please correct me on that, what? Majestic Mountain Sage, sorry, yeah. Majestic Majestic Mountain Sage are are located um, on to the parcels and then uh, the. The third parcel is is uh, vacant currently. So they're they're proposing and actually it's not from R two to commercial. I I'm staff that I don't know how that got mixed up on there either, cuz it is it is from commercial to industrial. Um, I think when I converted it over, that changed. So, uh, what the need for the proposed zone cha- change is to align the zoning with the current land usage. This is from the applicant, by the way, from from their application. What will the public benefit be if the zone change is granted? To ensure the ongoing economic vi- uh, viability, the businesses located in the proposed area. Businesses affected employ approximately thirty people and provide product services and support for customers both locally, regionally, nationally. Um, how does the proposal comply with the goals and policies of the Nibley City General Plan? Proposed zoning change strengthens the economic value of the area. And um, please explain how the anticipated use is appropriate for the surrounding area. Proposed zoning change will not impact the surrounding area. Current use will not change because of the rezone, the current usage has. Has had no known complaints from the adjacent property owners. So just to give you a little bit more context, um, so a- again, the. The existing site and I I already mentioned with the businesses that are there, it's surrounded by a commercial zone. Um, to the to the east, or sorry, to the west and and to the north. And then the an RM zone to the south. And uh, an R two A and a planning unit development, you know, town home development, just to the east of the site there. You look at our general plan, our future land use map designates this area as commercial. Uh, which is is consistent with the existing zoning on on the site. Uh, the land use goal one is encourage development that respects and preserves the character of the city. And provides a mix of commercial residential housing and some light industrial uses. Carefully planned for growth within the city, ensuring the development occurs in suitable locations and can be efficiently served over the long term. Land use goal two is to guide land use and growth decisions through application of the general plan, future land use map and relevant goals, principles and projects. And commercial and economic development goal two, create and maintain sustainable economic base for. Nibley City though provide tax revenues and increase local employment and convenience of shopping. So just a handful of goals that. That are relevant to this application. The the staff and the planning commission's recommendation is to deny this this uh. This request of this ordinance to to change the zoning in this area from commercial to industrial. Uh, for with with the following findings, that the. Industrial zone designation isn't compatible with with the commercial designation of the adopted future land use map. And just considering the the surrounding land uses, in particular, the the. Residential uses, both both the existing and the zone residential uses, that the. The commercial zoning would would uh, provide for allow for uses that are more compatible. With the surrounding uses than than industrial zone would. Uh, the there was a public hearing held at uh, the planning commission meeting. There were two two written comments that were submitted. And just just to summarize, they 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 were from people, the. Uh, residents in in the uh, residential area that were concerned with the impacts of the industrial. Uh, uses that could come with with the industrial zone, just just in short, that's uh, that's what they expressed. Um, but but this is. This is the uh, recommendation, uh, I'll elaborate a little bit more. And this does play into, I I believe, the. The reason for the reason in particular, and and again, this was a joint application, but Mountain View Machine Welding. Uh, they a few months ago, they did submit a. Uh, a a business license for another uh, entity, the that. Really is kind of a break off of their existing business of of a of a machine shop. And in error, I I did deny that application. Um, it should have been approved in the first place. I denied it because it wasn't an allowed use. And misinterpreted the non-conforming use clause of that, so. In part, that led to this application. I know there's other reasons for it, you know, it 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 does include these other parcels as well. And they don't, they don't have that same same issue. Uh, the applicant in the planning commission meeting did did mention that they're looking at potentially selling it. And that there's more opportunities with the industrial use, but I just wanted to acknowledge that, um, that that. Business license application has been approved since that time, since we've kind of identified that error. But uh, just wanted to to acknowledge that. But just in general, looking at the zoning of the rezone in in isolation and. And and the the context of the area, uh, its its staffs and and planning commission's recommendation. Uh, to deny and and keep this as as commercial zoning. There's also, uh. I I may maybe I'll provide a little bit more background as well, since I I didn't include it on on the slides here, but. They, these businesses have have been approved, they've gone through, you know, conditional use permit as well as. Um, site plan approval for for these buildings. And you know, they've they've been in place for close to twenty years. Uh, it appears that at some point that. You know, through amendments of land use chart, that although they were allowed uses, at at one point, they're they are no longer allowed uses. We we haven't pinpointed exactly when that happens. We change our land use chart a lot. We just know. They were, they were permitted, they were allowed by the council and the planning commission at the time. Uh, now they're not allowed, or well, not they, the the machine shop in particular is 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 a legally. Um, not conforming use in the in that area, so felt that was pertinent to the the consideration as well, but. We, I I can tell you that they approved it. Right.
The ordinance changes so that it's now non-conforming, it's legally non. Thank you. Should we address anything that? Tina mentioned to us in the. Uh, in the public comment, Tina, would you like us to address any of that? I mean, I I'll just say this, that. We take public comment and we don't know what the public comment is gonna be. And so we have no rebuttal at the public hearing for public comment. And you make great points about rats and lack of rats and everything else, but. You know, someone could stand up and say that we don't. Could say any silly thing they want. And I would put that comment um, as one that I would not worry about rats because of a change of zone. But we have no rebuttal for that in the public hearing.
It would have been nice to have someone say that is a non- applicable thing for us to consider tonight. But they didn't. It was, these are the written complaints. And so what do I have to go on? I have only the my rebuttal to it, and it's. You can't spread misinformation and then it's okay. Legitimately, what we're looking at does not attract rats.
I agree with.
And they don't eat metal.
I agree with you, and I'm not sure what the planning commission was thinking when they made their vote, one way or another on rats.
Cuz it never, it never continued to say, you know what? Rat comment, I'm throwing out, cuz it doesn't apply. The sound component doesn't apply. You cannot set your watch by the sounds over there. Except maybe the school.
Well, my guess is the planning exemption did not use those. Topic, that's my interpretation, but. Well said. Okay, um, either, I mean, so you've heard Levi's presentation, we're happy to hear you as proponents. And then we probably have some questions for you, and you can stick around and be part of that discussion, of course.
I I didn't thank Levi for giving the reason why this reason question was made. Is because he did tell Jason that he couldn't have. The additional business license for his pack rifle that he has done since from the time that he moved into that facility. So he was told that the only way that he could get that business license was to do a resume to industrial. Jason approached me and I also looked at it because. I'm getting ready to retire and sell parts of that land, had been approached by somebody. That would like to have part of that as industrial. At the time, all this zone was created, it was a commercial slash industrial zone. And unfortunately, we haven't been able to get to the ordinances where that changed, because unfortunately, it's not online. And I'm still waiting for my um, grandma uh, report on those. So I I don't know when or where it changed, but it did change from an acceptable use. To now something that isn't. The only reason that Jason is because he was a pre-existing use. And was grandfathered in, so. At one point, it was a great idea for it to be industrial. And that is part of the reason that I would like to uh, continue to have it that way. As I said, I've been approached by a business that would like to build a machine shop very similar to. Um, mountain machine and well. Um, the problem that we have is that we have linked industrial space. In Nibley, we have exactly three locations. Eck USA. Logan Coach and everything around the Malu F C R A. That's it. So. Two of those, they're developed out. So there's no development there. The third spot has exactly one owner. That controls all the development. The business owner that would like to buy mine. And move his business there is currently in the Malu F C R A. And he's being held over a barrel, and he would like to remain in Nibley. He would like to have his eight employees at that particular facility continue to remain in Nibley with. The rest of his other operations. So we got that reason of why I'd like to have this. Zone as industrial. Uh, for that one, it would give a business owner that's currently in Nibley and is looking at having to move. Remain in Nibley. I think that. Anybody that would come over and stand in that vacant lot, I would. Dare say that the noises that you will find are not the machine shop. Somewhat the standard shipping, because they do move a lot of trucks through. But the two noisiest operations there are the school. And the animal hospital. Other than those, I don't think you'd even know that there was a machine shop there. I think that having the option as an industrial still gives the city. Plenty of control. Because every single use that is designed or designated under the current zoning plan. Under um, industrial. Every single use that isn't already permitted under commercial. Everything else that is strictly industrial still requires a conditional use. So. The zoning, planning and zoning was concerned because they were afraid they were giving up control. Didn't know what was going to happen in the future. Well, we also kind of lost control when the city changed the game rules underneath property owners there. And rezoned it as a commercial without the commercial slash industrial. And now we'd like to reclaim some of that. The city's gonna still have their control over what happens there. Because there's still the conditional use permitting process. But opening that up gives me. More opportunities to sell that property to somebody that is going to develop it. Into something that. Brings an economic value into Nibley. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. So can I ask a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
So. The state has changed what a conditional use permit means. It's not that we can say yes or no. It's that it is a permitted use. And the city can impose conditions that reasonably limit the impact. But you can't make conditions up, they have to be codified somewhere in the ordinance. So you can't say, well. Um. Will allow this conditional use permit, but you can't. It it spelled noise or light above some decibel level or some movement level, unless it's already codified. We used to think of, even in my planning and zoning days. A conditional use was, well, maybe we'll say yes and maybe we'll say no. That's not the case anymore. The case is, it's a permitted use with the city able to impose. Reasonable conditions that exist in code. Um, that would mitigate the use. Does that make sense?
So does this mean that the current land use guides that are on the city's page are incomplete? Is marking all these as conditional permitted?
No, it means that they are permitted with conditions that are codified somewhere in ordinance. It doesn't mean, it might be permitted, it might not be permitted. Conditional use means it's permitted with conditions. If in other words, we don't get to pick and choose, we have to follow our ordinance of whether it meets the conditions. That makes sense?
Or or okay, we get to impose conditions to mitigate the use. Doesn't mean we we can say no. Conditionally, ah, it's conditional, we can say no. It's not a conditional approval. It's an approval with mitigating conditions. And. And I know that's a lot to swallow, it's 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 a slight change in words, but we've wrestled with that, you know, um. If if uh, someone in the industrial zone, that you're asking for an industrial zone. Um, um. A a rezone to industrial, if someone came in and said, I want a salvage, I want a junkyard. On that piece of property. We can't say no. We can say yes with these mitigating conditions. That are somewhere codified in our ordinance, somewhere. So conditional uses aren't really maybe yes, maybe no, they're yes with conditions.
Okay.
So how are these two businesses that already exist in Nibley? How are their conditional use permits currently allowing? Probably what you were saying.
Because they have established that use when it was permitted. And it may have been a conditional use that was permitted with conditions, I don't know, it doesn't really matter. But then, it's not that they were rezoned to something else. But the applicable zoning regulations associated with the zone that they're were and still a part of. Changed underneath them after they had established that use. And that's what we call can uh, legally non-conforming. A vernacular that's used more often is grandfathering. They establish the use, we change the rules, we can't make them keep up with our rule changes. They can continue, and that's what Levi explained, they can continue the established use that was legal at the time that they established it. And we when, when we made it illegal, that only affects new businesses moving forward.
Right, and and what? I guess that the air I had made is I, based on the research, and I, you know, I did a lot of research on it, but came to the wrong conclusion. I I thought it was, if it was a different business, then they are not allowed. It's not the business, it's the use. So if it's the same use category, you know, same use category. It can continue as long as it, you know, it's continuous, it hasn't, there hasn't been a more than a year between when the last use. Uh, was discontinued and the new use. So that's why Mountain View Arms can be approved. Uh, if there was another machine shop that they sold it to, that could, that could be allowed as well. But if it was another industrial use, let's say they want to occupy the building, it would not be allowed. Uh, because it wouldn't be allowed in the commercial zone.
The grandfather.
Yeah, right, right. It does, it doesn't apply to every use, it applies to that specific use that was granted.
So I'm gonna run down this, I mean, you guys have looked at it, thank you for doing the research, um. The difference between the commercial and the industrial, well, someone needs to stay up there so they can answer, I'm gonna ask you some questions.
Put it on the screen.
So given the fact that conditional use means permitted with mitigating conditions, right? Not permitted is easy, it's not permitted. I'm gonna run down this list and and as you think about, this is more, this is not a test of what you plan to do with your land. I cannot, I cannot ask you that, I can ask you that, you don't have to answer. Um, but you don't have to tell me what your future business plans are. So this is not a commitment by any means of for for you guys to do anything, but it helps me test our ordinance, right? So again, given that a conditional use is a permitted use with conditions. Are you planning to put a junkyard on your property?
Absolutely not.
Are you planning to do, uh, uh, there's a whole list, so I'm just gonna sit down. Are you planning to do heavy manufacturing?
No, define. Define heavy.
Uh, can you look up the definition for us?
It's not as heavy as you might think. I'll just say that, if we wanted, if we wanna get, go down that. Light industrial is very light, I'll just say that.
Heavy.
A place under building portion there of this user intended for the manufacturer predominantly from previously prepared materials of finished products or parts, including processing, fabrication, assembly, treatment, packaging, incidental storage, sales and distribution of such products. But excluding basic industrial processing. This term includes furniture production, apparel manufacturing, printing, publishing and the like.
Okay, so you might answer maybe to that, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough. Um, you're, you're helping me a lot. Um, are you planning to do mineral extraction?
No.
Are you planning to run a pest control business?
No.
Are you planning to run a recycling collection facility?
No.
Are you planning a sexually oriented business? That, that's a big deal. That, that's a big deal, by the way, between industrial and commercial. We have to allow it somewhere and we allow it in industrial. Actually, we're turning, we're turning away sales tax when it's industrial and not commercial. Because people don't pay tax, I know this, sales tax to M M S. Becky Yeager does not pay sales tax to Majestic Mountain Sage.
She doesn't.
Or because she's a manufacturer of soap. She buys raw materials from you.
But there, let me introduce that they pay sales tax.
And guess who gets the sales tax?
Apparently it goes into the state funds and then you get your.
Where does the point of sale, sales tax go? From where they place the order in their bedroom or living room.
We order everything as new. That's where we pull that. So. Tended for you. But the things work in reality is because we are a very small um tax collecting game. It is already permitted under our Nibley ordinance. We don't.
We don't report a ordering address to the state tax commission?
There's a facility within the state tax commission to actually gather back.
We need the chairman of the planning commission here to answer that question. It's for the state tax commission, anyway. So let's, let's keep going. Um, just, there's a few more. Uh, sports facilities are both conditionally permitted. How about a storage facility? Yeah, how about warehousing?
Do, it's permitted because there's office.
And you're selling, it's, it's, yeah, it's not, it's, yeah, okay.
It's, it's not.
And finally, at the end of the list, we get to this one called welding and machine shop, and I think that's the crux of the issue, right? So, one remedy here. And I'm, I'm testing this list because I'm trying to find out if we have the right ordinance. One remedy is to say, hey, look, welding and machine shops should be conditionally permitted in the commercial zone. And then we don't entitle you or whoever you sell it to to all these other things. We just entitle the welding machine shop to a conditional use in the commercial zone.
I could agree with that. Because the person that has asked me to try to get a per, a part of that property in front of me available to move his machine shop. Once again, unless you're actually in the building, you would never realize what it is they're doing.
I agree.
It doesn't smell, you can't hear it.
As an employee in my private life, I have dealt with a lot of machine shops. I had a lot of stuff fabricated here in Cash Valley. I've been in their shops. And, you know, with the appropriate mitigating conditions about noise and smell, like you just mentioned. I'm trying to figure out why a welding machine shop is not a conditional use in our commercial as opposed to just rezoning your whole property over to industrial.
Yeah, that, that makes perfect sense. Because quite honestly, from an employer running or a person that's running a machine shop. You want to minimize all of the human hazard that would be a problem. Typically, the biggest ones are fumes, noise, and contaminants. It is expensive for somebody not to be taking care of their employees in those ways, which makes them also a great neighbor. So that's, I don't think that belongs really under industrial.
If you were to get a request for metal mart to move into Nibley. Need metal pieces because they warehouse outside. Where does it fall in this list? Because that's also not what we are looking for.
Metal mart, according to the list that stands now. Levi, you're the guy that makes these decisions more often than we do. You interpret the code. Do you know what metal mart is? Maybe you can describe metal mart for us. I've been there.
Yeah, home people for steel.
Right.
And they cut in store and it's, it's a. Yeah.
Um.
They bring it in in wholesale quantities and cut it down to appropriate lengths.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I have to get into what, what that use is and if what, if it fits a definition and if it doesn't. Generally, it's not allowed. Now, the state just came out with a process that we have to follow when it doesn't fit. Fit within a use and how you determine if, if it, you know, is close enough to another use basically and.
But see.
But, yeah, every, every one of the, every one of these. The devil's in the details of, of what it, what it, what we call it. It's all based on the definition.
And the perfect place for all of these that are conditional in the industrial. And even if we have a conditional in commercial that's currently not permitted. Seems like the perfect, perfect place to codify reasonable conditions is in the definition. Right? Okay, so Nibley City will allow a conditional use of a welding machine shop that doesn't smell and make noise and cause environmental hazard. Now, that's a general description that would have to be more specific to be interpreted. But it seems like, you know, that's the place that we now codify conditions that um, that we can impose in a conditional use permit. I mean, we do that with home occupations. It's a home occupation that doesn't employ outside employees and this, 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 this. Okay, I'm gonna be quiet. Let you guys talk. Well, unfortunately, what I suggested, we can't do tonight. Please, give me a motion.
I make a motion to approve the first reading so we can.
Okay, so first reading is when we have the introduction. We hear public comments about rats and all that kind of stuff, and then we go out and do some research about those public comments and the council can ask staff to do additional research on anything that, that they think needs to be done before we get to second reading. And then, uh, we, we we can hold our own public hearing at the council level. I'm inclined, I don't know what I'm inclined to do. I think we've heard comments already. If council gets ahold of me and says, I think we ought to do another public hearing. But then, but then we come back to this. Do some more research, do some more thinking, talk about some alternatives. You guys are welcome to talk to any member of staff, any member of the council. And then we'll resolve it at second reading.
Okay.
And you stayed here for a long time. Thank you for being here. Ours too, can't you tell? Okay, so we haven't, we haven't, I, I mean, did you second it? No. Do we have a second?
The motion is to adopt for first reading.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, so that's the motion.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, we can discuss it, sure.
Same, can, can you have the same use from two different? Sure, so you can have, like, you can have well, like, slash a few shots, both as a conditional and industrial and a conditional.
Absolutely.
Any, any of these could be changed, but that's but that decision, just, just to be clear, it needs to go through another process. Where, where the zoning, like you did on the last item, you changed the zoning. This is a, this is a change to a different ordinance, which is the land use chart. If, if you wanted to entertain something like that, it would have to go through its own process. And whether or not, you know, the planning commission agrees with that and the rest of the council does, that would need to be considered separately as its own consideration.
Nate, uh, so Mayor, you went down some of my line of thinking, uh, but I have a question, um, that was brought up in the as a proponent spoke for my reference and reminder. A legal use chart change typically will include a public notice hearing. So. I felt like it was inferred that changes happened that people weren't made aware of, but my understanding is, it's not necessarily one that we would send out a notice to surrounding property because the whole city.
Oh, right, right, right.
A public hearing.
Correct. Yeah, which is different, different than it is for the rezon.
Does that make sense to you all? We have, we have public notice, but then we have mailed notices for things like zoning changes.
Use chart change and, you know, how that all happened. Fortunately, I'm still waiting for records to be researched on that.
Now, now, if, if the applicant chose to, now, I, I guess the city could just do it. Um, but if you want a way for the applicant to do it, there is a fee associated with that. So for this application, just so you know, this is based on the consolidated fee schedule, it's five hundred dollars for a rezone or code change and then a hundred fifty dollars for uh public noticing. So it's six hundred and fifty dollars for this, for, for the applicant. Just, just so you know, every, every time that something like this is considered.
Even if it's.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, but, but we can also change our ordinance without an application.
You could, you could.
I mean, the next two. No?
Okay, and a couple of other questions that maybe in the government, maybe kind of everywhere down that, which is I think that they're not necessarily interested in one zone or the other, they're interested in it used in, in the zone. So, uh, we don't need to talk about that. Um, recent, recent Senate meeting for the general plan, I believe, percentage of is currently zoned industrial? I looked at the presentation, but it only showed residential on another lane, but it seemed high.
There's, there's quite a bit of land around Malouf, right? I mean, that's, that's the majority of it is around Malouf.
I think that's another reason why I would like to avoid making for industrial where we already have. However, I think there's, they said, and so what? And then you brought up, um, a legal law in working right and fees with a new property. And that's been confirmed by our attorney. And so you deny an application under a different interpretation. What resolve does that applicant have now that we know?
They'd be granted their business license.
They've been granted the business license. I guess, yeah, I mean, they, they didn't have it for a while, so unfortunately, I mean, it was a mistake, but.
Okay, those.
We, we're not holding back with any valid.
No, not valid, just.
Want to vote up for a reading? Okay, those in favor of advancing this to first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any post? Okay, we'll do it all over again. Or continue, not continue, that's a special word. We'll keep doing this. Um, anything for council or, sorry, staff to research in the meeting?
What you discussed, look, see if we put that in.
I, I, I would, I, I, and we can definitely go through that process if, if the city wants to, the applicant puts something in. We did at length with the planning commission, go through each and every use pretty recently. And that was one of them that was discussed. So just, just something to keep in mind there, but. Yeah, and I don't know if there'll be that detailed to say that specific use in the minutes, uh, but, but the. It was discussed for several meetings before, for several workshops before it was, uh, before the decision was made. Yes.
So the disclaimer is there's no guarantees on that. Don't give people guarantees. Okay, um. I'm gonna ask the council to consider abandoning, not abandoning, uh, suspending the rules and changing the agenda.
Also, I mean.
Um, but let me tell you what I'd like to consider. He, well, I, I think fourteen and fourteen is more important than thirteen or fifteen. Because heritage space is coming up. And we're gonna write one heck of a lot of tickets for people that are parking in undeveloped carpse ships unless we spend a heck of a lot of time out there with orange cones and do not block.
We just send them on vacation. The code enforcement guy.
Then I just have to fill in for Norman. I just gotta work more.
You can't tell him not to enforce code. So. My proposal is to
I forgot to text him, yeah. I, yeah. Yeah, he did.
So next item is ordinance twenty five fifteen.
He texts me two hours ago.
The, this next residential zone, our app. And a motion from Norm and a second from Nate to continue that and tell our next meeting.
Next one looks fine. My second just finished speaking.
Next meeting is a special.
Oh, let's say our June.
Twenty sixth.
June twenty sixth meeting. So I have a motion and second to continue to our June twenty sixth meeting. Ordinance twenty five fifteenth. Especially, seeing none of those people, please say aye, aye, any post? So, that brings us to thinking ordinance twenty five nineteen, this is a man city code regarding parking. And, uh, this is our second reading. We heard about this first time last week and I don't know if there's any new information to present. Probably not.
Probably not, but Evan did want to be here.
Yeah, and I, yeah, and I, I can, I mean, he's, he said he could be here in five minutes, but, um. He just wanted, he, he just wanted to, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna paraphrase what he said and may, maybe he'll. He just wanted, he, he just wanted to, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna paraphrase what he said and may, maybe he'll, if he gets here. Um, he can explain more, but, you know, Evan, Evan's done a lot of work enforcing. This ordinance and, and all ordinance in the city, and he just wanted to explain that he has seen a huge change. In the number of people parking in the park strip. Primarily, you know, he's given warnings, he's given some, I, I think he, he's given some tickets as well. But, uh, people's behavior has, has been changed in a pretty short amount of time. And so that's just something to consider with, with this ordinance. Uh, there's also been some people that have invested, uh, some money in their property because of, of the enforcement. Um, because, you know, they parked in the park strip before and now they need another place to park a vehicle. So they're widening a driveway or, or doing something like that, and so that, that's something to consider as well. But it's just, it's just something to put out there that behavior has. Based on Evan's, uh, observations, has, has changed quite significantly on the number of people that have parked in the park strip. Uh, since enforcement has gone into place.
I think that's a great point, and I think that says that we have effective code enforcement. Now, the question for council is, the one I'm asking the council, what do you want? What, what code do you want? This isn't a question of is code enforcement effective, good, 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 it's a question of. Do you want people parking to be prohibited from parking in undeveloped park strips? So it's the council's discussion, go ahead. I would let you off the hook, but we gotta do something, Heritage Day is coming. And people have traditionally parked in one heck of a lot of places all these years that are. Always were prohibited, but will now be enforced either through, as, as part of an education or part of the.
Sorry, can I just get a clarification on? What exactly our options are here? What are the two, the directions we're looking at?
Uh, do you want to pull up the red light ordinance?
It's just fourteen.
It's only a few words.
That way from, from file.
You know. Um, motion and second to approve. Still answer the question, yeah, we zoomed up a little bit. Oh, thank you. So we define, Justin, you wrote this, I thought you did a great job, you wanna tell us what it is?
Well, I thought about it and, and I just. Just trying to figure out a way to differentiate, it seems like thirty two hundred south had a lot of problems. The old parts in town were having troubles, twenty six, thirty two, and so the question I had really is. For you to decide, is, is parking in the park strip a problem in these areas? So your options are to say, yes, that is a problem, we don't want people to do it, and in that case, you need to do nothing. You can just let this die, the existing code will continue. And Evan will go out there and continue to put warnings on anybody that parks between the edge of the asphalt and the sidewalk. In these areas where there's no curb and gutter. The, the amendments just try to differentiate between a developed park strip and an undeveloped park strip. An undeveloped park strip would be areas where there is no curb at the edge of the asphalt. So, including ribbon curb, so if you cross the street here. In Apple Creek, they have a ribbon curb that would be considered developed, you should not park in there. But many other places along thirty two hundred south, and we can pull those pictures back up if we need to, there's no curb. And so people are pulling off the asphalt, they're on gravel, they're on grass, they're on weeds, they're on whatever. But they're not on the asphalt, therefore not in the bike lane, they're not on the sidewalk. So if, I'm not advocating one way or the other, but if you are okay with that, this code change would allow them to continue to do that. And specifically, it just differentiates between a developed and an undeveloped park strip. And it says that you cannot park in a developed park strip, so you cannot pull up over a curb and park. On the, between a curb and gutter and sidewalk anywhere in town. If there's no curb, you can pull into that space, and as long as you're not in the bike lane, as long as you're not on sidewalk, you're fine.
And, and I will add, we do have a fair amount of cases of. People parking in a developed, what would be considered in this, a developed park strip, there's, there's quite a few of those as well. Right? Yeah, I mean, just anecdotal, I, I, I see it frequently, and then we, we have to enforce it, yeah.
And if you have a, a developed. Also, I, I.
I think if that's the case, we'd have to go sign it.
Yeah, a- anywhere, anywhere with signage, and we, I guess we can put signs anywhere and say no parking. And there, I mean, that's, that's allowed too.
I, I thought about writing that into the ordinance that says we can prohibit parking. So we can do that already. I mean, what I would do, what I would like is to do, I think it'd be a very nice proactive thing to do. Um. Not so much, uh, enforcement, like, you can't do this. But if we know of property owners that have expressed, gee, I like this because they can't. Park in my undeveloped park strip and I want to beautify it, and I've already beautified it, we'd reach out to those people and say, hey. We support that, we'll put a sign on your problem that says you, that you and everyone else cannot park. And maybe even, you know, take it to a newsletter article that says, hey. We've changed this ordinance, if the council's inclined to do so, we've changed the orders to allow. Uh, or to, to allow parking in these undeveloped park strips, but if you feel like. You don't want parking in the undeveloped park strip that's next to the property. On that undeveloped. Uh, come to the city and we'll work something out, like, put signs up for you, for development.
Yeah, we could go put curb gutter.
We could put curb gutter there. Or they could, well, no, because, they would be. They could develop, but. They're already developing.
Park strips are getting paid. Uh, I know that you feel pressure to do this because of Heritage Days, because of. And strip of road, the retail mostly, uh, in other areas, when parks that we use. I don't think that'd be the motivation, change this cap. Uh. I think, uh. Like, for example, thirty two hundred south right here, we, you pointed out in our last meeting, that houses that we used to park in. Uh, my guess is, is that because of fireworks, there will be certain days where. Going to park here at City Hall, there's a new parking lot that we just made, which is a bummer. But I, 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 I'd like to, in, in regards to Heritage Days, I'd like, I'd like us to investigate following the or- ordinance before just changing. For Heritage Days, I guess is what I'm saying, I don't wanna just change this Heritage Days, and I don't think that was the intent, I just think. The bike lane language of this is due to state, correct?
Yeah, we were just trying to make it clear that we define a bike lane the same state does. So, I, sorry, real quick, on that note, we also have Tom is, uh, reaching out to. CRS, OROX, to kind of get some ideas on how we could stripe these roadways to make the bike lane more understandable to. Public, exactly.
Um, so I guess what I'm saying is, I am. About the parking and the definitions here about the developed park strip. Uh, but I am one hundred percent with our past bike lanes, so. I haven't invented anything, I guess, that's why I'm having this discussion.
So is there a specific reason about the park strip stuff, why you would want to wait until the meeting, like, is there, are there follow up questions or research? This would be done, or this passed?
Uh, great question. I. I think a lot of the problematic park strip areas other than thirty two, it sounds like, due to our budget discussion, might resolve themselves soon. Or like the options of putting in curb and gutter, but there's a reason that the city, uh, in certain areas or points didn't require a curb and gutter. I just don't know what those are, I tried to get to that last meeting about our park strips for water. Stormwater help, or utilities. Um, just for a buffer so that someone could walk safely on the sidewalk, they had, they figured.
Yes.
Yeah, so I think thirty two hundred, I mean, part, uh, I think part of yours. Also deadline. It's okay, it's better, better time. And that's, uh, pick up and drop off. Uh, at Heritage, or that's, for events, right, um. I think that there's more, I think there's more to it than just thirty two hundred, even at Heritage Days and at school. Because I think it affects eight hundred west in a big way. If there's ways to paint lines to make it so people can be off the asphalt and not on the. Not on the sidewalk, and people still have access to the sidewalk, but now that's going and putting in the curb and gutter. Cause we're not putting curb and gutter in for stormwater and all that other stuff. All I'd rather just paint lines and let them have that parking. They decide they don't want it, then we'll take it away from them. I've talked to residents about that, they get warnings or whatever about parking on the front lawn. It's like, well, what else do I do when people come to my house? They don't have enough, they don't have any street. And if there's not a safe way to do street parking, I don't want them to have street. They miss out on a lot of things that the rest of us have. Cause there's no curb.
I ju- I just wanna mention one thing about Eighth West, and that is that our transportation master plan. We talked about this with Tom a little bit today, is twenty two feet of asphalt for eight hundred west. So, there, there's not, there's not, there's not, within the master plan room for on-street parking. Or bike lane or anything, just two lanes of traffic. Uh, sixty six feet, so.
You could park on the, so that's not on asphalt, if, if we allowed parking in undeveloped.
Right, I mean, I guess the, if we built it according to the cross section, it would be. A developed park strip with a curb, curb, you know, and, and sidewalk and.
Yeah, I'm not talking about building, saying if there is a sixty six foot right of way. We have a sidewalk and we have twenty two feet of asphalt, there is room for parking there. We didn't build a curb, I'm not saying.
Well, yeah, and, and sorry, let me clarify, the current right of way isn't necessarily sixty six feet up and down eight hundred west, that's the master plan. Right of way width, it's, in some locations, it's like fifty feet, I think, but. Right. Just wanted to point that out, that we do within our cross sections. Allow or enough room for on-street parking, but twenty two feet.
What is it?
It's more like twenty eight, twenty nine, probably, what, what would you say, Tom? That, probably. Twenty seven, twenty nine, somewhere in there.
Yeah, and, and if I'm missing something that is like allowing people to park in the. Undeveloped park strip that somehow, like, putting cyclists in the bike lane at risk? Then man, I'm, I'm all ears, but I don't see that, I mean, what I wanna do is go enforce the bike lane. Prohibition everywhere, and do it seriously, and paint our roads like thirty two hundred south, here's a bike lane. Turn right into your subdivision, there's no indication for people turning right that they need to yield to a bicycle or share with a bicycle. I'm serious as heck about protecting cyclists, but I don't see how. Parking in the undeveloped park strip is somehow a threat to the cyclists. Any more than parking in a developed park strip, Nathan.
Does the city in, that you can think of, have any utilities in a, a park strip? Or ours?
Think along eight hundred west, water lines, I'm like.
I mean, even a, even a swell, I mean, I mean, basically, most undeveloped park strips are swells. Now, they might not be perfectly manicured swells, but they're in general a depression that holds stormwater. Absolutely, yeah, there's definitely utilities in the park strip, developed and undeveloped.
I think, I, I think the one thing I'm hopeful with is. If, if like, someone doesn't want parking, maybe it's silent, or, just again, yeah. Like, the way that we have this written, I felt like just pulling on my. But I don't own that, it's more of a public right. And I, I'm certain it comes to you, like a commencement in someone's yard, if we don't let them do certain things in case of any accidents. Nuisance or, or whatever. I think there's gonna be areas where, to be rare, like, because someone's parked there, or a trailer parked there or something. Causes a problem, I don't know, I'm just trying to think of all possible scenarios, and I'm uncomfortable with some of them. Does that make sense?
Do we disallow parking trailers on the road for some, more than some amount of time?
Forty eight hours.
So you couldn't park in developed or undeveloped park strip for more than forty eight hours? Well. If I may, while you're chewing on that, back up a little bit to your Eighth West discussion and painting lines. I think you could paint lines on Eighth West, now I haven't done the engineering on this, but you could paint lines such that you had parking. Or you could paint lines such that you have a bike lane, I don't know that you're gonna get both.
Well, I agree completely.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I, and I know which one I'll take, I'll take the bike lane.
Yeah.
My, my interest in parking in undeveloped. Park strips, parenthetically, like we've been doing for thirty five or forty or fifty years. It has nothing to do with taking anything away from current or future bike lanes.
Yeah, okay, just wanna be real clear about it, boys.
And so I've started noticing other towns that don't have developed park strips. Um. Melville, man, I've parked in park strips, undeveloped parks, they're, they're big, right? But there's some big park strips on thirty two hundred south too, big undeveloped park strips. I have parked in undeveloped park strips in Melville many, many, many times. Um, I've seen them in Logan, and I look at it and think. What harm is that to me? I mean, the fact that. There, I mean. We allow on-street parking. If there's a curb. We essentially don't allow on-street parking if there's no curb. That's what the, that's what the ordinance boils down to. And that's a fair statement because the curb defines where you can't park. And if, and if it's uh. If there's no curb, then you know you can't park on the sidewalk, but you can approach into some other space.
Next question. Can you go to the limited parking section number three?
Where, sorry, is it?
Yeah, so uh.
Oh, uh.
Number three after all the death questions, so.
Not sure.
It's uh, where you're.
Sorry, I'm trying to find it, limited parking, okay.
Does parking occur, they use the phrase, phrase curb line? Curved line, where the curb would be if we had a curb?
You're ma- I think you make a good point, um. So we do, we're very specific about where people can park, right before this statement. Twelve inches from the curb, if there's no curb. Then it's. Uh, I think it's the edge of the asphalt, but let me, it, it shall be unlawful to stand or park any more revealed in the street other than parallel with the curb. And with the two right wheels of the vehicle within twelve inches of the regularly established curb line, except those streets which have been marked for angle parking. Then trailers shall be parked at the angle to curb indicated by such marks. We're very specific about where you can park. Parallel, unless it's been marked for angled parking. But with. Um. The, the undeveloped park strips. How, however you wanna park is fine, parallel. Yeah. As long as you're not on the sidewalk, as long as you're not on the bike lane, you, you can do it. Yeah, or the vehicle.
Fine. I'm free curbing the asphalt of a driveway, municipal surface or roadway. I'm just trying to balance the curb line, it's essentially the same thing. Yes?
I just.
I'm, I'm asking anybody who.
That was the intent.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But. I don't want to make any paragraphs, talk about. Kind of. Putting any hope in your head, but. I think it's okay.
Growing up, you had, growing up, you had people at your dad's house. You know, I was on eight hundred west, you had a bigger group, people always parked, I mean, it's still beside. It's tight, but I, I think it's. It doesn't work, we can change.
Yeah.
Um, no, because, well, yeah, we can't. However, we've modified people's behavior.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's probably, they're only good for so many modifications. People don't toggle back and forth too many times, so if you don't like it, then don't do it.
But most of the behaviors was because they're long terms, the ones that you talk about modifying there, cause it's a long term that they have to park their. I mean, you see, they can't park over forty eight pounds.
Well, we've modified their behavior by enforcing.
Yeah.
The no parking in undeveloped. So if that turns out to be a bad idea to allow parking in undeveloped park strips. Then we shouldn't change, it's not good. To say, well, let's go back and forth, it's. Cause code enforcement's working hard on changing behavior, which is exactly what we.
Do we in the city have concerns specifically with heritage, you know? Similar like in the, in its currents, in its elementary?
Mm-hmm.
But. So later on in section five, we specifically would say, if you're gonna access school or educational facilities. You cannot park there if we say, don't park there. And I think it's gonna be fixed when they finish school, obviously, but currently, I know that was one of the pieces that's kinda came up was. There was an event, that's some place to park, a bunch of people got warnings. Will all of that on both sides of the road? Do we need signage is what I'm asking, after we pass this ordinance, will we now need to put signs like on the south side of thirty one, so people don't park there?
Well. But there's already signs that say no drop off pickup, there's. Yeah, there's, there's no sidewalk on some of that. Through, right across the street from Heritage Elementary, so there is no park strip. Great question. Can they park there if they're not on the asphalt, not in the bike lane, and there's no sidewalk? So. I don't know, that's a good question. Um, but. Guess not, still, other than your other question, if it remained the same as it is right now. And we didn't want them to park there, we would need probably go have to go sign it, if you pass this, then it's fine, they can park there. Until. Until we put up signs, if we wanted to prohibit it at those locations.
Yeah, so as I read it, to answer the question of would they be able to park where there is no sidewalk? I think it would be yes, because we have a regularly established curb line. That they could park there. With their twelve inches. So they would technically be able to park on the street?
Not there in the bike lane.
But now we're gonna drive.
So they would have to be off the asphalt, in the grass or the field. But it's still, I'd have, I'm not sure of that.
Scanning.
Yeah, thank you. Cause I, have you spoken with Heritage, they not want people parking on south side of the road to not urge kids crossing their.
That's very much.
But it's some levels, the school issue as well. They could also put signs out that say, do not park here for school state for children's safety.
Or they could build a parking lot, being.
They are, but in the means, because that's was not opening this fall, right?
Correct.
So we've got weird.
Yeah. I think the parking did a breeze, but yes, you're right, there likely will still be some of that issue.
I just know, like, this scheme has done a lot of work, trying to educate parents about, this is the safe way to pick up your kids, please don't park in.
Yeah.
See. Please do not park here, because we do not want my kids. Getting around the herd, I think, honestly.
So we handled that by, there is an notice, you cannot drop off pickup, there are signs that say no drop off pickup, they don't say you cannot park.
Right.
So it's clear that you can't park over there, have your kid run out to school, run across the street or something. We have, it prohibits that, the cops have, sheriff's office has issued warnings, talked to people about prohibiting that. But they park a car over here, say for the, the. The walkathon thing that they do. And they park over there, or they get out of their car, they walk over across the street. That's the question of, like, I'm not a hundred percent sure. If that's legal or not. But what's not correct? Which part of what I said?
Or to drop off or pick up.
Even at the school, even if it's a city event, children at the school, they cannot do it, they can't do it.
Well. Not being able to be parked there, if there's no parking, it's not parking. I don't think that's what Justin was saying. If we put up no parking signs, it's not. Exactly, if that's on pickup and drop. Right, now that's another story, and the reason we did that is because the back door in Heritage. Was a real problem. Was. And so that's what this ordinance was, is we said, look. We can allow, but in the past, we've either allowed parking or we've disallowed parking. Now we've got something new here, we're gonna let people that live there park there. But we're not gonna let parents do pickup and drop off.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm just a shared group, you know, I mean, as I re-read that.
Probably depends what the sign says, right?
No, the sign says no drop off, pick up.
Yeah, right, that's what I'm saying, if it said no drop off or parking.
But we specifically left off the parking, because we wanted people in that neighborhood to be able to park in their cars.
Yeah. Century.
Yeah. I'm just gonna try to put it at that.
Thank you, well, and. The reason we need to put it in ordinance is because code enforcement is doing their job, which I'm. That's the thing, I mean. You never know if you have good ordinance or bad ordinance, if you don't enforce the ordinance, and when you do, then you start asking, is that a prince or bad one? Let's see, I think David Church told me, there's two parts to the law, there's writing the law and testing. You can write any law you want, but until you force it, until the courts look at it, say, that's a good enough law. You don't know. So I'm, um, I didn't, I didn't mean to push too hard on this, I don't, I really don't have a urgency. Or don't. So I'm happy to. Continue to think about it. Especially when it's this late.
I wanna make, um, listen. We have to do a draft changes here. We're gonna, I'm trying to be efficient, so, uh. Three, limited parking. Or was before, or may change, so I turned down. Right, uh, my, there. Um, my own proposal may not be to. Say. Parking at curb or in undeveloped park strip. At the beginning. And my justification for that is that we do not define how someone has to park in that park strip. Um. I think this just kind of enforces the common sense, that would be that we park in the right direction. And within so far of the curb line between sidewalk and road. I don't know if it'll be interpreted that way, but that's the best I can do tonight.
Yeah, um, I, I like what you're doing. We don't have a definition for an undeveloped park strip. Maybe we need to say, we've defined a developed park strip, and that's why the code only referenced the developed park strip. And it's hard to say, uh, the undeveloped park strip is everything else.
Yeah, I, I think you could suggest that, but I don't.
You just put park strip, you just get undeveloped, and since we're getting curb or park strip.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I'll just figure that, someone else decided it. Decided it wasn't even necessary. So it's interesting. No, you don't like it.
No, it's okay, it wasn't much effort, is all I'm saying. To type it.
When I see the definition, I get the word up, I've done it up here in one of these windows, what is the definition of the developed park strip? Is it clear that an undeveloped park strip is everything, that it's not a developed park strip?
I didn't need to add. Yeah, I'd just say, uh, the undeveloped park strip is the space between the sidewalk and when you try to create curbing.
Well, that's what that says, that's a developed.
This is what it say. Or I guess a not.
A not. Yeah, keyword. So not.
Said that.
Repeat the whole thing, not.
Yeah.
That.
I'll do.
Do you guys want that?
Yeah, here, I'll.
Do you want me to just put it on the screen? Just gonna do this.
I think this is.
I'm just putting it on there, just.
We have also. I'll take a second.
Me in the area between the sidewalk and. Between the sidewalk and I think you can get rid of against. You need to define curb.
I don't think we're there. What, so? What is it? Where is it referenced?
Curb line?
It's referenced.
Curb line was referenced a few times.
Yeah.
It's just not defined.
Right.
I mean, is it? We know what the curb is, I mean, we needed to find that, or is it?
Is it the edge of the curb? I call it a lift in the real world, the lift of the gutter. But it's curb, not the lip of the asphalt.
Slip of the curb, okay.
I think we're actually okay without my addition. For to me. As I read it, it, it talks a lot about like the left, you can't have your left side of the vehicle on curb, you can't do this, you have to do it in progress, it is. Uh, I think it's. I was just trying to establish some. How to park in an undeveloped area, but. We haven't needed it for hundreds of years.
We've been doing it for six years.
I just wanna make sure that everyone can. Whoever are here for us are. Do it, but I think we'll be okay, so you guys can kill my amendment, whatever it is.
It's you guys.
Y'all. Yeah.
Do you want to vote against it now?
I'm motioning to the people.
So if you'd like, we, we have had a motion to amend, which is replaced by a motion. Uh, do voice blue with foam? Replace.
Substitute?
Substitute, right, replaced by a motion to substitute, which is the red and green, well, no, the green. Stuff. There and, and the green stuff below. Show us the green stuff below. Right there.
You can go ahead and comment though. Okay, okay, just let me do that.
It's not yours anymore, all right? If there's no objection to voting, we'll vote on this substitute for an amendment. Those in favor of, uh. Substituted amendment, please say aye. Any opposed? I'm gonna say aye, one, two, three, okay, so substituted amendment goes away.
To delete it?
Yeah, I. I, I don't, like I said, I don't wanna push you guys on this, I really don't. I really think if we didn't have fifty years of history. I would be very, very cautious. But it's how we've been doing. And that's why people are mad at us. This is what we've been doing. Okay, anyone opposed to voting? Uh, the motion is to adopt. As was presented, as is presented. So we call it a little least. I call that in favor and opposed, so we have amended ordinance. And another little suggestion on suspending the rules, it's not gonna snow for a while, so. I think we can continue. Motion to continue, a second from. Motion to continue till the twenty sixth, send it from. Discussion on motion to continue. With some favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes for continuance. Am I getting that all, what's going on? Okay, let's, uh, let's do the questions down in the forums. Man, you, uh, you pulled the short stay when you picked Nibley, or you gotta start with Nibley, we'll get the chairs. I promise.
Sure.
Yes.
Think we gotta get. Cards out.
Uh, Aaron, please.
I'll just ask one question, I brought up last time, there was a thing who was concerned about snakes in here. Do you have any chance to? Look about. Any sort of barrier, maybe we can put in between. Our property. Firefly and her fence.
Uh, no, we don't necessarily look at any barriers, and speaking with Rod about it, what he's learned and been taught is really. The only thing you can do is just mow the grass to nothing to eliminate any places that they wanna be on our side. So we actually did do that in a couple of random places, but not Firefly Park. I mean, I, I can look into further if there's something.
It seems like a barrier, whether it's mowing. No, or whatever. Wall project. Just eliminated part of the fence, is that a thing? How many does she see in a day or a week?
I mean, I don't know a specific number, but she said it's enough that it's, it, she, they don't like, she, she doesn't like using her backyard, because she feels like every time she goes into her backyard. She's surprised by a snake in grass. What she said.
It used to be, but now.
Anything else?
I'm just excited for Heritage, guys.
Uh, briefly, I'm, I'm gonna thank Autobahn and the youth council. The bird people. Anyway.
It's a person.
Auto, auto, Autobahn. The bird, it's a fence, they printed up these cool little stickers, I was gonna break some, but I forgot, it's just a little reminder about. Protecting firefly population from outside lights. So. I don't want us to say, say it fast and you can't tell, and you'd counsel are handing those out along with some flyers. That, uh, will. Help people understand that the fireflies are. Seal them from lights.
They're great this year, by the way.
That's what I heard.
Very magical.
We can go there now.
Yeah, just go after this meeting. If you don't wanna stay up late another night, might as well do it tonight.
Just mentioned briefly, I, I probably had. I, I probably had the best of times and worst of times in terms of. Customer. Uh, interactions, one, the worst was a garbage pickup that didn't get done, that was just turned into a mess. Started as a mess and ended as a mess, and then fifteen minutes later, I have this and. Fantastic, and we need to do something about this, Justin, I mentioned that this phone call from a person who was, said he called the city because of. Not chip ceiling, but slurry sale or whatever we were doing, was gonna be a major, major inconvenience, so he called up mad to talk about. How this was not just an inconvenience, this was a big deal to him. And he has a reason. And Chet. Was like a champion. Who worked through it with him. And did so many things to mitigate the impact of the slurry sale. That this person said, I felt so guilty at the end of the conversation for my motivation to call up and yell at someone, it solved my problem. That I would talk to you and tell you what a great guy he is.
Chet?
Yeah, that's a good deal. So we should follow up with him, Steve, and do something.
For sure.
Okay. Uh, that's all I've got, thanks.
Uh, just briefly, I, I already sent it, sent out a meeting invite for the general plan workshop, Nibley Forward, we're branding it. Um, hope, hope you can all make it, not just you, but if. If you can get the word, help get the word out, we're trying to spread it far and wide. Tell your neighbors, tell your friends. Should be, should be good, we. We wanted to have a bigger room, we've tried to have it at Heritage Elementary, but, uh. They've got flooring they're putting in, so if we do. Get to the point where we don't have enough room in here, it's a good problem to have, and we've got kind of a backup plan, go outside and stuff, but. We're gonna pack it. Full, hopefully. This room, so. Thanks.
The original part, our city center part, I invited the mayor and council member Larson to be on Tuesday. It's a Zoom meeting, we're, we're gonna be discussing terms of those observations, we just finalized, and we, we thought both parties. Offered their side of. Their solution, I guess, um, so we're just trying to iron those out, so we can. We pull over the curving, the BA, the biological assessment was. The draft was already submitted, so they're in ready to have, so. We're getting really close, just need to get it to the finish line. So we get permitted under construction.
I didn't look at the invitation, who's there from the federal fish and wildlife? Is there a new name on that, Jen, Jen, Jen?
That is a new name on that.
She's a Nibley resident, she works at the wildlife, the, the bird refuge, and she's the president of the wildlife committee. The wildlife, what is that? No, our.
Cash wildlife.
Cash wildlife, so she's. Yeah, I didn't recognize it, that's small town, anyway, I'm not saying she's gonna be nicer or harder, she shouldn't be, she has a job to do as a federal employee, but. She's a good person, she does a lot of stuff out at Firefly, she does a lot of stuff. With backing on things. So, it'll be a reasonable process, I believe. Doesn't mean we'll give it a while. But I think it'll be reasonable.
Don't want to see both of you there, I'll try to get the conference room.
That election candidacy period is over, and we're sitting on the primary.
That's good.
I think it's gonna.
It starts at. We had an invitation, okay, but if we're supposed to be doing something. Seems like we show up and don't know what to do.
Starts at six.
Starts at six.
I really don't think there's anything to do but come and eat and enjoy.
Yeah, I.
Takes care of everything, we'll be taking tickets and checking off names, but otherwise, it's just, you know, have fun.
Do you know the last year, they asked the council to kind of hand out drinks, so it was a free for all, so we can follow up and see if that's. What time should we show up for the parade?
Nine thirty at Logan Coach.
The parade started ten?
Are we supposed to wear these?
I guess.
No, you can't, you can now.
There's usually someone on the sidewalk blocking it when you go through, just saying.
Okay, where are we, Justin, you get stuff?
Been pretty keyed in on the budget.
Yeah, that was a good job. Good job, so. We need to set up a meeting. Adopt some kind of rate.
Thanks for all your efforts.
Okay, we completed our agenda without objection. We are turn.